There we go. Good afternoon, I'd like to call the Tuesday, July twenty-fifth, one P M school board workshop meeting to order. At this point, I would like you to please rise for a moment of silence. Thank you. We're gonna do the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And then now she went. Oh, say that you see why the dawn's early light was so proudly we hailed at the twilight's first gleaming. Whose bright stars and bright stars could have ever spied, or the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming. And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say that that's our stable banner yet wave, o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave. Thank you, and please be seated. Oh, we go on to roll call.
Will Ferry, present.
Kristi Chong, present.
Sally Hunt.
Sharon Masero.
LaShaka Moore.
All right. Special announcements, are there any special announcements?
No.
Okay, we're going on to board member liaison updates.
No updates for this meeting here today.
I have nothing for the summer.
I have no updates.
I don't either, so we're moving along then. We're down to public comment. I don't see any, was there anybody here that would like to do public comment because we aren't, we don't know where Miss Gavin is, she'll be here shortly, I'm sure. No one has signed in. Okay, thank you. No public comment. All right, we're going down to operational services, seven-one, five-year work plan. Mister Freeman and Mister Bush.
Good afternoon, Chairman Masero, board members, Superintendent Wilson, and Moore. I'm sorry. I present to you the tentative twenty-three, twenty-four district five-year capital plan. This plan will also be used on our five-year work plan for DOE that'll be due October first of this year. This plan includes starting with the process for a high school next year with the groundbreaking in twenty-five, twenty-six. We will be bringing the forecast reports from Davis Demographics to you, the August fifteenth information worked up, workshop, to see if the trends for the high school still maintain where we're at right now. Is there any questions?
Anybody have questions?
No, just the, so you have here twenty-four, twenty-five, um, two million. That is just an escalation of, of estimated budgets for moving forward along there, is that what that is representing?
Yes, sir, so the, the twenty-four, twenty-five would be when we get the, the engineer, architect building that process going out for bid, and then the twenty-five, twenty-six where you see the sixty million, that would be when basically shovels start digging, the process actually would begin at that point of groundbreaking, if you will. And then hopefully being done, uh, the twenty-eight, the twenty-seven, twenty-eight school year opening.
And again, this is all just dependent upon the, the data we get back from that?
That's correct. That is correct.
So that this could potentially change, this is just kind of our vision at the moment?
These are based off of what we had done.
The previous data?
Yes, sir, yes.
All right. Thank you.
Anyone else? The, the only question that I have is one that I have every year, is the hardening of the entry to the youth center. Is that something that could be under small district projects? Is that a possibility? Because it was, it promised when they en- ended the schools, we were very close to doing, that that would be next, and it was on years ago, and then it got taken off, and I'm hoping that it gets back on there.
Yeah, the, the issue, and I can comment on that, the issue with the youth center is that it's already protected as all our schools are. I mean, you have, in order to get in through the door, you have to be buzzed in. It just does not have a lobby, um, like the, our schools.
It doesn't have a lobby, but I think the plan was that it needed to be closed off on one side, so it had egress, appropriate egress, and that they were closing off, they were putting doors in the back.
Right.
So it would be almost creating a lobby, in a sense, because there, now you come in, you're in, basically, and that, that's always been a problem, and there, there are quite a few kids there, and they've had a couple situations already, so it's just something I think that we need to consider to, uh, and if we look at the old plans, I think you would see what I was talking about.
Yeah.
Something to think about.
And I can tell you that right now, as we speak, Beltair lobby is, is undergoing to be completed, and then we have.
No more.
Benell and Rimfire, um, lobbies that need to be, they're partly done, it was a lot of the class, right, they need to be modified, so I know those two are on this plan for this upcoming year.
Right.
But we definitely can look at that and, and see.
On the road, yeah, and on our small, I don't think it'd be terribly expensive, but I think it's something we still need to keep considering.
Yeah, I, I think the last estimate we had, um, maybe a year or so ago, was about seventy thousand.
Yeah, okay.
And we are.
Possibly small projects?
In the board meeting, uh, tonight, there'll be the general contractor, um, bid that's coming to you all to approve, so that was one of the things that we've been waiting on, 'cause our general contractor, there was only two contractors, and just with the workload, they've got it getting behind, so this is gonna open that up to allow us have more opportunities with more contractors, so that hopefully we'll be able to get some more projects completed.
All right, thank you. Can I, quick thing to that? Um, and it's kind of the same thing when I see, you know, this being installed here. If someone wants to come up to these offices, same with the youth center, and they have a concealed, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna talk, they have a concealed gun, that, 'cause we didn't say, hey, are you carrying, right? Um, there's really nothing more at that point you guys can do than to go behind locked doors, correct? Like, go into offices, whatever. So I guess my question is, so at the youth center, I, I was there one day when the students were all coming in after school, um, and there's really not gonna be protection during that time, right? Because they're all kind of right there, but my question is, if it's one hour into the time, are there, where they're playing ping pong, where their, um, where the couches are, 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 do those doors lock?
They're locked outside, yes.
So they, if somebody came in with an issue.
They can get out.
Right, at this time, they could retreat, if you will, and have locked doors. So I was gonna ask, is there something we could do?
Yeah, the idea is, 'cause they have their most, their largest population when there generally isn't S R D coverage on campus, so when there's issues, it usually happens between the hours of four and six, that timeframe, or in the summer, when they're going alone a lot, and they're the only ones pretty much on campus. So that's, that's part of why we'd like to see it get tightened down a little bit. They've done everything, they have electronic locks there, you know, but those windows aren't, you know, shatterproof, that they're gonna break, and it's easy to get in, I mean, if somebody wants to get in, they're gonna get in, so we have a second.
This would be like a non-student?
Yeah, exactly. Or a parent that wants to pick up a kid that they're not supposed to have.
'Cause otherwise, we have someone who is at the entrance the whole time.
Yes, if somebody at our desk the whole time.
Just somebody does, currently, if those doors are shut, somebody physically has to buzz them in.
And right, and I know, at that point, they just now have access to the whole.
Current, that is correct.
And when the kids are all coming in, the doors open constantly, 'cause it's buzzing really close, in between kids, it just keeps opening until they get in, and once they pass their security, you know, and they sign in, then it closes, and then it's buzzed in individually.
So one final question, I'll leave it alone. Is, is there something that we can do in the meantime, like, I assume as of now, I have to buzz someone in to see who they are and what they want, is that correct?
No, you can see them.
But you can't speak to them?
You can speak to them, they have an outside, actually, they can make.
There's a, there's a ring doorbell.
Ring doorbell.
Sweet, so that's what we're doing as of right now? Like, I don't know who you are, what's up?
What do you need?
What do you need? So we're kind of at the best point.
Yes, we have that, that, they do that during hours, it's, the students aren't there during the school day.
Yeah.
Those, they have vendors that show up, and sure, that need to have meetings and whatever, and that's how they know who it is, 'cause there's nobody at the front desk then, they only come with their students.
So we're about as good as we can be?
As we can right now.
Okay, thank you, good question.
All right, all right, that's it. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
All right, next one, the S R D contract, Mister Willahan, please.
Good afternoon, Chairman Masero, school board members, Superintendent Moore.
Or Moore, I shouldn't use that name, too.
Um, before you, uh, you will see the twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four S R D I L A between the sheriff's office and the school board, um, that would be presented tonight at the six P M meeting. On page three of the contract, um, we did strengthen, um, the language, um, for, uh, the deputy, that is defined in Appendix A, um, that would come at the cost of the school board at a hundred percent rate. This deputy, uh, would be utilized for the entire fiscal year of the contract, which would be, uh, the deputy would be placed at our alternative program site, which is co-located, co-located on the Florida Palm Coast campus for Rise Up. This deputy would service that Rise Up, uh, program. Also, he would, uh, service our students in summer school and summer programs at no additional cost. Currently, our Rise Up program is, um, a Monday through Thursday, uh, program, but if there are no students on the campus on a Friday, that deputy would be utilized elsewhere, uh, possibly, um, as a floater, if there's an absent or vacancy at another school's site. The sergeant, the commander, and myself will work out the operations of this deputy, um, but we will have that deputy for, deputy for the entire fiscal school year. Also, on page three, you see, we'll see that, uh, due to statutory changes through F R S, um, their hourly, uh, flat hourly rate did rise from forty-two dollars an hour, uh, to forty-eight dollars an hour, uh, for summer school, for any additional deputy for summer school. So, uh, in the past, myself, uh, and this sergeant, and our, our team that, um, works on planning for summer school, um, when we are requiring our students for instructional hours, um, we, we make sure we have a safety officer at those campuses. So that forty-eight dollars an hour you see is for summer school. So if we need additional deputy, from the deputy that is being allocated a hundred percent, this deputy would be, any additional deputy would be at forty-eight dollars an hour. On page four.
Oh, I, I'll wait till the end.
Yeah.
On page four, uh, we did strengthen the language that came out of our operational audit, um, which the receive necessary training, mental health, mental health crisis intervention using a curriculum developed by a national organization, the sheriff will provide a school board a copy of the mental health certificate for each S R D. We also, uh, added the language that receive the required training for the Florida Harm Prevention and Threat Management Model, uh, which, uh, was formerly known as the C- Stag Model for Threat Assessment. Now that there is a, a Florida model, we, we're going to ensure that we are in compliance, that our, our S R Ds have that training for the Florida Harm Prevention and Threat Management Model. On page five, we also did strengthen the language that came from our operational audit, um, to complete and maintain an activity record, which will be submitted to the school-based administrator, principal, or does a need to verify the hours worked at the school, and for validation of the activity record, this will be sent to the safe, safety and security office as record for, uh, invoices for the payment, so, uh, we will make sure that the services that are provided to our school are documented, um, appropriately, and signed off for veri- verification from our school set administrators. Page six, um, we are, uh, going to be moving forward with a standard response protocol for plain language, um, instead of a, a color code procedure that is in pl- passed, uh, we would like to add plain language, and, and we were meeting Florida administrative code on that, uh, so, uh, we have, we have a standard response protocol, um, that the sheriff's office has had their eyes on, that we are moving forward with on that, so there are, we're getting rid of the, the color codes, procedures. Uh, we also included the, the language for family reunification procedures. On page eight, you will note, you will notice that, um, in the event that an S R D is absent for work on any length of time, the vacant position cannot be filled by the S R D unit supervisor or section commander, a substitute for the absent S R D will be assigned by the sheriff during regulated school, scheduled, scheduled school hours. Previously, or this came at a flat hourly rate of twenty-five dollars an hour, that was split between the school board and the sheriff's office. That is, uh, has been taken out, and it is now at the deputy's hourly rate. So in Appendix A, you will also see the, um, cost of one additional deputy sheriff at one hundred percent, uh, cost of the school board. All other ten deputies, ten school resource deputies, um, that the school board is responsible for, uh, and the commander and the sergeant come at a fifty percent rate, that is split between, uh, the sheriff's office and the board of the B O C C and the school board. So you will see the total contract excluding overtime, you'll also see the additional deputy sheriff at a hundred percent, and the total contract with the one additional S R D excluding overtime. Board at this time, I will take any questions on this consideration.
Okay, Will, you got a question?
Yeah, let me just scroll back here. All right, in, um, on page three.
Yes, sir.
The, um, explain to me, aside from the, the amount going up from forty-two to forty-eight, right, in the blue area, what, can you just kind of summarize what exactly changed in that area and how that impacts us?
Right, so, so, uh, even though the contract does stay from June thirtieth to July one, um, it needs to be noted that the, the school resource deputies are provided to the school for a, a service of, of roughly a hundred and eighty-three days. With, school's in session for a hundred and seventy-nine school days, uh, but we do have our S R Ds on our school properties for a hundred and eighty-three days, so what that means is they come, uh, to pre-planning to get familiar with the campuses and our administrators, um, and they, they stay about one or two days after, um, school is released, the students are released for, 'cause we do still have faculty and staff on our campuses, um, and for that. So the contract does reach July one to June thirtieth, uh, but it, it was always agreed upon that it is a hundred and eighty-three, uh, operating days. What the language that was added in blue, um, will provide the additional deputy at a hundred percent for the entire fiscal year of the contract, so the school will have the, the full operating, operation of that deputy throughout the entire contract, um, so that's where I would meet with the sergeant, the commander, um, to determine where the best, where does that deputy fit? So first off, it would, it would probably go straight to our, our summer school, that's where we would allocate our, our deputy, um, that we would give for a hundred percent that's in this contract. So that deputy would probably go to the extended school year, um, third grade reading camp, and we, we do host additional camps at, at our school sites in the summer between Boys and Girls Club and other organizations. Once summer school is over, then we would look at other summer camps and programs such as the youth center, um, or other camps that are still going in session, or, um.
Board meetings.
Board meetings, any, anything, any operation, um, that we've seen best fit for, for that deputy, but it's for the length of the entire contract.
Okay, of this contract versus our fiscal year, that's what's changing?
So all of the other deputies work for a hundred and eighty-three days, this particular deputy that is being funded at one hundred percent cost to the board will be, be with the school board the entire year, all of the fiscal days of the year.
Okay, and this is a, is this a new position? Okay, so this is adding to the.
Random, yes.
Added, yes.
Um, for that deputy, is that a salary, or is that just the cost of the sheriff's office?
Right, so.
Good.
So this, the number that you see before you is the salary benefits and operating cost of, of a school resource deputy. So it is, it is everything, it is training, it is gun, ammunition, vehicle, the operating cost is an, is additional, uh, but it's also included in that, so it's the salary benefits is one way, and then the operating cost of a school resource deputy.
So that would just be in the case that we're having something where we, we need to have an extra deputy for a certain event or something like that, uh, we would be at forty-eight dollars per hour to have them there.
If it's, if it has, if he's working the school day, um, if it's an overtime rate, then that's, that's a little bit different, so if it's like, let's say, a, a Friday night football game, that would come at the flat, that would come at an overtime rate, that would.
Which is, what is the overtime rate?
It would be the overtime rate of the, of the deputy, so we don't, that's, that, that is gonna be a different, uh, piece, that's not actually in this contract, that is something that we are still working out, we are still gonna find a, a, uh, rate, because they have just completed their negotiations with their unions, um, to figure out what that, that hourly rate would be, uh, because we did have concerns, uh, for our athletic events, uh, between the two schools, and what deputies are assigned, so it should be a flat rate, um, when they're providing services to our extracurricular activities.
Boy, it kind of, it just.
For example, like, today, we have a deputy for this meeting, that deputy would be available for this meeting.
Okay, so that's just another, should additional S R Ds be required to provide security during summer session, though, specifically, it says there? So throughout the, outside of summer, it's a different rate?
Out.
Well, it's, I'm just saying that in this here, it's saying for the summer rate.
Yes, yes, yeah, so if that deputy was working, let's say, was, if, if it's August tenth, and it's a Tuesday, I'm just throwing it out there, I don't know what day of morning it would be, but that deputy was working at, at Rise Up, and we had a board meeting that night, that deputy would then get his flat hourly rate of whatever is agreed upon.
Okay.
But if it's, if there's a board meeting during the summer, then we would, we would say, is this deputy available to work our board meeting and provide services?
And then this would apply?
Yes.
Thanks.
Anybody else's questions?
I, there's just one thing that, um, Tommy, you said that I, I didn't quite understand. If an S R D during the school year calls in sick, 'cause this person is gonna maybe serve as a floater, right? But we are, that's where we have that fifty percent contract, right? So are we essentially paying, so, so what if we have, you know, our S R Ds who were in for fifty percent, calling sick, calling sick, calling sick, and we're doing the fill-in at a hundred percent? Does that make any sense? I'm just trying to figure out, like, is that a good, is that a good agreement for Flagler Schools?
So, so Flagler Schools did have a really good agreement, uh, with the sheriff's office, um, just like, everything, there's, there's, there's cost to, there's budget, budget reasons why this has been, that language has been removed. Previously, it would cost the school district about a hundred dollar, a hundred dollars per day, um, for a deputy to be, um, filling in for a vacancy, for a road deputy to come to a school site, uh, if it wasn't in operation, if there is a K nine training, or some sort of training that is required by the sheriff's office, there is no cost to the school district.
Oh, if they're out because of a job?
Of a job.
Okay.
So any operation, operational that is required by the school resource deputy, um, for example, we, we have first-class deputy champion and K nine nitro out, um, for, for K nine training in Jacksonville, that deputy that is going to be provided to F P C would come at no additional cost to the school board, it wouldn't, it would be paid by the sheriff's office.
I guess I just don't understand why, if that deputy is ill, that's different than if they have a training, because those deputies belong to the sheriff's office, so if they're not there under that contract, I would think it would be part of that contract that would replace them.
Yeah.
Am I just not even thinking of this?
Uh, so, so usually what happens in, on, when, when we do have a road deputy that comes, uh, fill a, a vacancy at one of our school sites, these are deputies that are usually working at an overtime rate, so that they have already, it's going to cost the sheriff's office, um, money to, uh, bring in an officer that's not already assigned to the road, so these are, these are deputies that are just picking up overtime details, essentially, um, so it does come at a cost, uh, for the sheriff's office.
So the sheriff is passing that along to us, I mean, because it is, it is his responsibility, 'cause it's his people, right? But he's basically saying, this is what I'm willing to, okay, I mean, it's part of the agreement, love it, I mean, I don't love it, but I get it, fine.
And, um, if I may, I really equate it similarly to our nurses, you know, when, and though they're, um, you know, they don't have a sheriff or the health department overseeing them, when we have a nurse out, you know, we have to, um, pay for someone else to come in at the cost of whatever it is that this outside services are provided, so I just kind of equate it to, to a similar thing.
Well, so, a quick question, do, uh, nurses are contract?
They are our employees.
They're our employees, so that's just, to me, with all due respect, that's totally different, 'cause those are our employees, these are sheriff's day, these are employees, right? Which is to me, so to me, is it, is there, is it in the contract that there's only so many days, not trying to be ridiculous, what if an S R D at a school called in sick every single day? Is there a cap in the contract of how many days?
Are we protected?
Are we protected, that we don't have to come to the table at a hundred percent cost to us, because that person who we essentially are paying for through a contract, are, they're not available? So I, it just, it just, um, I'm not, like, in love with that piece of it, so I just, that's a piece that I think could be tightened up a bit. Okay, I'm breathing. But thank you, I mean, I get it, but.
Tommy, how, how does this, excluding the additional officer, how much, what do we pay extra? Do you know?
I believe it was in.
I see. Okay, obviously, we have the increase, goes with the hourly rate increase.
Yes, they, they are, there was an F R S increase, um, that was approved, uh, for special risk class, um, that to go up, uh, this year through legislation, um, so that, that is a big portion of, of the reason for the increase.
So currently, then, the sheriff's office paying half of this, other than the extra person? They'll pay five hundred?
And, and, and there is, there is a deputy that is paid, um, for, by the city of Palm Coast, and there's a deputy that is paid for by, by imagine.
Imagine, right.
So the city of Palm Coast does pay for a deputy at a hundred percent rate that, that is not at the cost of the school board.
My, my concern, and all, the biggest concern that I have is that we're picking up a whole new officer at full rate, that's a lot of money, um, and, and it's something that we have to be aware of, because, I mean, we're talking about budget, budgets are getting very, very tight. I know it's very tight on the county side, I know there's conversation about not doing the fifty percent split, which would be very expensive for us right off the top, so, um, that has me concerned, when I hear those conversations, because, you know, I love our S R Ds, don't misunderstand me, I think they do a super job, we're very pleased with the team that we have, they've always been professional, and I worked with them at a lot of different levels, and it's always been good, I just, it concerns me, you know, if we're starting to pay for one now, is it gonna be two next year, and three the following year, and, you know, are they, are they slowly backing out of the agreement? I, I don't know, it's just something, a proposal we need to be aware of.
Chairman Masero, just so you all know, last year's contract, the S R Ds was eight-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand-six-fifty, the total of the contract was nine-fourty-four-sixty-four, the, um, remainder balance, um, between those two was to pay for the crossing guards, which was a hundred-and-fourteen-thousand-four-oh-nine. So last year, the ten deputy sheriffs, the sergeant, and the commander, the cost was eight-twenty-five-six-fifty.
So, I mean, that's a substantial increase.
Yeah, and seventy.
Yep, plus we're paying for another person now.
Is this all included in? Is this all included in, has this already been factored into the budget? Sorry, doesn't mean to make you get up.
No, you're good.
We're talking numbers.
Um, we have a safe schools categorical for this, um, that we get, um, as part of our, um, FEFP runs, and the total cost of this contract is a little over nineteen thousand more than that category, than that safe schools categorical.
Is that coming out of general?
That will be coming out of a general fund, yes.
So.
Before overtime?
Nineteen thou-, well, this doesn't count any overtime. Yeah, overtime this year was close to about twenty-five thousand, and we're still receiving invoices.
Okay, so we're potentially forty-five thousand at the general fund?
At least, it really depends on that overtime rate.
I would probably allow fifty thousand, thinking that's where we're, we're gonna end up. So you can see how it's starting to chip away from our, our bigger bucket, and that, that has me concerned. And, I mean, a hundred and forty-two thousand's a lot of money, to just say, okay, you pay that. I know we need it, I don't think right now there's any way out of it, we're, we're gonna pass this, cause we have to, there's no doubt about it. But I think, you know, we need to start looking for alternatives down the road. Hopefully, we don't get there, maybe all of a sudden the county says, this is a great thing, we're gonna keep doing it, because, you know, we should. And that's what they, they, they might say, and they may not, but we need to be prepared just in case.
Well, and, just the, the timing of this, you know, this, we're, we're getting this kind of like last minute, even have a conversation about this, you know what I mean?
This, this has been in the works since April.
Yeah.
I will.
Just, yeah, and, and just talent is, it's all, but we have no choice, we, we need to.
We have to do this.
Yes, you're right, but I think we all need to be aware of where we're at here and where we might go, and just be prepared. I mean, yeah, we're back to the guardian conversation, I understand that, that's one thing, but perhaps we need to look closer and armed, you know, dressed, whatever, uniforms, coverage.
Yeah, just keep in mind though, that, well, at least based on what we have right now, the, the sheriff, and this is kind of where, why we, we would have to have this conversation, because he's expressed that he's not interested in a guardian program that, uh, unless it supplements, um, the SRDs. So there's a balance here that we have to find, because, uh, we need the sheriff for the guardian program to even exist. And, um, if, if, if he's, uh, going to only support it in that way, that option may not even be on the table, right? So again, more conversation to be had, uh, but, you know, when it comes to these things here, you know, it would be great if we had more, uh, conversation on, on a bigger item like this earlier on, so that we could be part of this negotiation, if you wanna call it that, right? So.
I think, yeah, this year, I do wanna make one correction to the statement that you made. And that is, there have been districts throughout the state where their sheriff has refused to train the guardians, and that is not an impediment, there are, you, districts do have the ability to reach out to other counties, sheriffs, to do the training, and they have had to do that in other districts. So that is not an impediment that prevents it all.
Yeah, I, I just don't think it would be in our business to cross that line.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't wanna do that.
I wouldn't wanna do that either.
But, uh, it's, it's good to know that that, that is an option, cause I was not aware that you could go outside of your county for that training, so.
You can't, I just think alternatives, we need to keep that in the back burner and figure out, you know, what's this gonna cost us down the road? Because I think we're fine this year, I don't know where we're gonna be next year, and hereafter that, who knows? But we need to know that's a possibility.
And, and as, as Ms. Warmick, uh, did mention earlier, it, it is based off our safe school allocation, and I know the sheriff has, has presented in the past, um, uh, at this table, um, where it's, it's ba- really it's based off your crime index and, and where the safe school allocation money does come from. Um, Flagler County is, is on the lower end of that crime index, um, so that's why there, there's, the money is not as high as other, uh, neighboring districts. Um, so that's, that's a legislative, a push that, that may have to come, um, if you would like to see a safe school allocation, a for, a formula to get, and he always talks about the formula and how it needs to be, um, advocated for.
Yeah, I don't think there's anybody on this board that wants to see crime increase, we like with the sheriffs.
Yeah.
It's just that the crime index piece really determines.
The factor of the formula.
Yes.
Yeah, I get it.
All right, just two things for Patty.
Sure.
Um, I'm asking, even though I know you're on it, um, but I'm just curious, is there anything from any of this that can come out of the half penny? And I know you've, you know what I mean, I know that's what you think about, I'm just, because safety was one of the things that was on, you know, the half penny conversation.
Sure, and our superintendent, um, just, uh, had this conversation with me, um, a few days ago, and I, I do not believe this can come out of it based on the referendum.
It cannot.
But we, but we, we are looking at the referendum in more detail, just to see if we can alleviate, um, some of our general fund costs in other ways.
Yeah.
We already do use it in some ways that are allowed, but we did just look at the referendum after, uh, Ms. Moore had, um, asked that same question.
Yeah, like if sheriff, well, and if, if there's any creativity where we save Sheriff's Daily money because we are paying for something from his overhead, right? Like, I, anyway, that's just a question.
It can't be used for salaries, correct?
No, ma'am.
Or you could use it for equipment, could you not?
Uh, no, you can use it for capital, and that's the big thing, and it has to have a five-year, you know, there's a criteria for what is deemed to be capital.
I believe it says safety, infrastructure, something tonight.
And we are, we are, yes, we are looking into your very question.
I love it.
That's good.
Um, and then my own other question on it is, when we've talked budget, and you say, hey, last year our over, overtime came in at this amount, has that been factored into, when we talk that we're maybe at a four and a half percent reserve? Is that factoring in the, um, likely cost?
The amount of overtime that was budgeted was twenty-five thousand, which is the, this was very high this past year. This was not done before the budget was done, so.
We, we assume that the overtime is gonna be the same, and Tommy, I think we're still working on that.
Yeah, we are, we're really gonna tighten up the, the, the process of, of making sure that when a deputy is out, that the school district has notification of that, and the reason why that deputy is out, so we can, um, follow up to see if it's operational, or if it's a, uh, the vacancy is due to an illness or vacation.
Yeah, so that, just because we are in a place where we're really watching dollars. Um, I know I'm gonna repeat myself. With Sheriff's Daily, we're almost, there is a contract, and so, you know, if I've ordered ten ice creams per day, and I'm paying for ten ice creams per day, and they can't deliver the ten ice creams that day, I don't know why I would still pay them for the ten ice creams and then also pay over here, right? And I'm, I'm obviously hungry, but that's just the one piece that I, I'm, I would really appreciate some follow-up on that one in particular.
And that's been ongoing conversation, as that Tommy and I have had during the year, once we started to see these overtime costs. And I do believe, like he mentioned, it is a process piece that needs to just get tightened up.
Cause they're our employees.
Right, we've been having these conversations.
And we, and we do have the commander and sergeant, that we have language in the contract that, um, those are the, the first two that should fill that vacancy at no cost to the school board. So that, that, those are the first two, if the sergeant and the commander can fill the vacancy, they're the ones that fill the vacancy. If they cannot fill the vacancy, that's when they seek somebody else to, to fill the vacancy. So that piece will get tightened up.
We'll check more, thank you, thanks.
All right, you're welcome, thank you.
And just reminder that this will come tonight.
Tonight, six o'clock. All right, thank you very much, you're welcome. All right, we're going down to, to nine oh one, uh, Mr. Reeves, out of state overnight travel.
Your board, your superintendent Moore. This request came a little late from last month, and it dropped to us, but there's a, a group going from FPC, the Starlets, to, uh, a training or a conference in Atlanta, and five students, two adults on this trip. We'll note that on transportation costs, you talked about, uh, a cost for rental vehicle, that is not the case.
Right.
Uh, they have a fleet van per take, so there's not a four hundred dollar cost to that one, initially, and there was not a van available, they since revised that request.
Very. Yeah, and.
Correct.
That's, Starlets have been, had a very successful last year, so this is exciting for them. And a, and a really exciting opportunity to have to move and learn from it, and I think that's, that's great.
Yep.
Anybody else have anything else to say? All right, thank you, Mr. Reeves. Okay. Flagler Technical College, twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, fee schedule, Ms. Kirkland and Ms. Pinkpansy, it's all right. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Chair, board, superintendent Moore. We are bringing the fee schedule back in front of you for further discussion regarding extended day. The last time that we met, you had some additional questions, and Patty sent you some additional information. And so, uh, we were able to see what the five-year comparison was for profit on extended day, noticing that it dropped from twenty-one, twenty-two to four hundred and two thousand dollar profit, almost four hundred and three, down to eighty-three thousand dollar profit for this last year that we just finished.
So, are, are we, I'm sorry, yeah, we're gonna have a conversation, so I think we know what we're talking about, I guess we're just going with questions then? So go ahead, we're, questions?
So, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but are, are we still at a profit, or will that not cover, um, salaries?
We were at a profit for this year, but because we, uh, had the increase to fifteen dollars an hour that happened in October, so it didn't include August and September, and then the teacher increases from twenty-five to twenty, to thirty-five dollars an hour, it didn't happen. So it happened in March, so we had essentially seven months of that that were unpaid. So when we look at, if we change nothing, then we would be at a deficit next year of fifty-three thousand, eight hundred dollars. We would not bring out.
There's no increase.
If there's no increase.
Right, I mean, it would be, it would, actually, what I see happening is this program will go away, because it couldn't fund itself.
And it can't go away, cause we need.
Cause people really need it. I, when I did a little research, you know, did a lot of research actually into this, I found out that the, um, the babysitting rate in Florida is eleven dollars an hour. Okay, eleven dollars an hour, wait, Flagler gets better, Flagler is fifteen seventy-five an hour. That's one, one child to one adult. That's a lot of money, an awful lot of money. Extended day is one session, you got one session is eleven and a half hours per week, at forty-five dollars, which is the new rate, breaks down to four dollars an hour, four dollars an hour. If you have two sessions, you should go both in the morning and the afternoon, all right? That's twenty-three and a quarter hours a week, at sixty-five dollars, the new rate, that's two dollars and seventy-four cents an hour. We have a good product that the families here need, I don't want to raise it if I didn't have to. But let's look at, let's look at summer camp. Eight weeks of coverage, that's forty days, at eleven hours a, a day, that's fifty-five hours a week. They pay a hundred and twenty-five dollars, and they stay the whole time, it's two dollars and twenty-seven cents an hour. And they only went forty, same, they only, I only use forty hours, three dollars and thirteen cents an hour. And if they work thirty hours, it's four dollars and sixteen cents an hour. That's a good deal, that's probab-, I, I don't think you're gonna find that anywhere, that price. At the same time, you have this group that's getting hit with a tremendous amount of credit card charges, because everybody uses their cards to pay, was it thirty-five thousand or?
Just under thirty-five for two thousand twenty-two.
At this particular moment, they're not done yet, okay, cause this is, I believe, the last week of camp?
Yes.
Correct, okay, so thirty-five thousand. You had fifteen dollar increase, okay, but they were paying ten to their employees, now they have to pay fifteen dollars. So that's why that huge loss from last year to this year. You also have an increase in all their admissions for their parks and their trips, everybody raising those fees. And the biggest one to me is you lost the sixth grade, to me, I thought, they used to have sixth grade add to that pot.
So is that, is that what, why there was the major reduction in revenues?
Yeah, yes. That, actually.
Cause it was not, the previous year was nine hundred and fifty-five thousand, and then we're at seven ninety-eight, nine sixty-two in revenue for N twenty-three.
Yeah.
And also, the, uh, fees for the credit card went from three point four nine percent to this year will be four point one nine percent.
Is there a way around that, where if they got it, like, could they get a discount if they didn't use a credit card? Or is there another way we could pay?
Well, aren't we, aren't we char-, aren't we shifting to, to billing them for, if they pay with credit cards, they have to pay a convenience fee? Is that happening?
That's not part of this fee schedule, the increase would.
Cover them.
Would cover for everybody, it is close to a hundred percent of parents that use that, that pay by credit card. It is a hundred percent at Benell Elementary, and, um, at B T S is ninety-eight to ninety-nine, same with Wadsworth, Old Kings and Rampire at ninety-five percent.
Does that go for debit as well?
Yes.
Cause it's probably just run like.
Swipe, any transaction.
Well, I mean, so just, I, the question is, is there, um, a platform where, where our parents can put in a routing and checking number and have it come out? Or is that open a whole can of worms, cause now someone doesn't have money in their account? Like, is that even, is that even in the realm of possibilities that we could offer?
We do, we do the e-checks as well, where parents putting the routing, the account number, there's a fee on that as well.
But it's usually much less than that, you know, than.
I can check on it.
Yeah.
It was, it was all in one, one in a report, but I can check on it.
Then you also have the, the, the bounce checks, cause I would give them to the youth center, so then they're all they're paying an additional, it used to be thirty dollars, and I guess he's got, right, about fifty at this point, for a bounce check.
I think they're thirty-five.
Yeah, they're.
How about that?
And then we, they're thirty-five from the bank, and then we also charge for a return check.
Right, exactly.
What if we increased the summer camp, but left the extended day, would we, I mean, I know we'd have to do the math, but that's, still put us at a deficit.
The, the numbers that I gave you were only for extended day, so summer camp and extended day run and separate columns. And so if we do nothing, then extended day next year would lose almost fifty-four thousand dollars.
So the, and I brought this up last time, I, I don't think the concern is for a household where they're making two hundred thousand a year, right? Like, that's not our concern, and you brought up scholarships. Cause I will, I appreciate you doing all of this research, I will just, I will share my opinion. Extended date to me is a fixed cost for a family, not a variable cost. So if I'm doing babysitting, that's maybe to go out to dinner with my spouse, which I don't have to do. To me, extended day is our society doesn't work without it, because parents have to go to work, right? At different hours than when the kids are at school, so it's just like a fixed requirement. And so I think my question was, what is that threshold? How does a family who's making household forty-five thousand a year, are, are they able to? I don't even know, what is that number, where we give them a ten percent reduction, twenty percent reduction?
We base that, the scholarships through FTC, we base off of the free and reduced lunch numbers. So when they fill those out, whatever the percentage is off, um, this year, of course, everybody gets free and reduced lunch.
That's how, that's how does that work out?
Right, but that's not every, I mean, not everybody has that, so we can, we can pull that information, that's what we do every year.
Cause to me, that's at the heart of this conversation, it's not, Kristy, is that fair? Like, we're not as concerned about a family who's.
I, I mean, I don't use extended day, just for the record, but, um, it, it hits the middle class the most, the, the two parents that are having to go to work, cause that's just what they have to do, and, you know, it's another cost.
It is, and, and, like I said, I, I wish we didn't have to do that. Unfortunately, as a district and as a program, they keep getting increased costs. That fifteen dollar an hour increase has killed a lot of our after-school programs. I see what's happening with the youth center, I see what's happening at the garden center, it's very difficult to show the pro-, to make profit. And as it said, it was two months that they didn't pay their stamp. That two months takes away all the profit they had this year, and puts them in a hole, ironically, but that's where they would go. That's why she's losing fifty thousand thousand, just for the extended day. So, you know, we, we have, we have to keep the program, cause it does benefit the athletes. But I think we have to be realistic, that at this particular time, the costs unfortunately have to be maintained to be able to keep the programs. And then next year, if there's a huge profit, maybe we can fall back, okay? Or if there's a close loss, you know, hopefully, we won't have to increase. But I think we need to do something to maintain those programs, cause those parents, if they don't have this, then they're out trying to find other coverage, and that's the biggest issue.
Definitely needed.
Oh, yeah, we need.
I just think as a, I just think what we're trying to do is come to the table with how to relieve. I just think as a, I just think what we're trying to do is come to the table with how to relieve. I mean, it's needed, it's not gonna go away. So, I realize we have to fund it, but I just think we're looking for what are those creative solutions? Like, if we can save two percent by them doing an EFT instead of, you know, credit? Like, what are, I just think we are looking, again, just kind of creative solutions? Like, is there something?
Well, what, your, what was the loss you projected if we don't do the increase?
About fifty-four thousand dollars.
Okay. And so, coming up with that loss, what are your projected revenues for the next fiscal year? To come up with that fifty-four thousand dollar loss if we don't increase, without it?
Yeah, if we go with what we have, which is the increase to forty-five thousand, I mean, forty-five dollars per week for AM or PM and sixty-five dollars for both, then it would, we estimate that the increase in revenue would be about two-hundred-and-ninety-eight thousand dollars.
Okay, increase in revenues, okay. So, what would, what would be the, what would we profit at that number?
About two-hundred-and-forty-two-thousand-six-hundred.
Okay. And then, what, what are your, what are your revenue projections? Because last year, it was, we have an, on the report I have, was seven-hundred-and-ninety-eight-thousand-nine-hundred-and-sixty-two. Are we expecting to have more or about that?
We're expecting to have a few more students than last year. But it would be the, the eight-hundred-and-sixty-nine-thousand plus the additional two-ninety-eight, taking into account the additional
Okay, I guess, what are our costs going up from? Last year, expenses were at six-hundred-and-ninety-thousand-three-hundred-and-twenty-five. So, what are our projections for the cost for the next fiscal year?
Our, well, supplies and everything do go up some, so we are expecting an increase in those things. But the majority of our increase are in the three things that we're talking about. It's the credit card fees and it's the staff and teacher.
Well, I'm just saying, we, right now, based on this year, according to my report, we were, we had a profit of a hundred-and-eight-thousand-six-hundred-and-thirty-six. According to the report I have here, showing extended day, and it says twenty-two, twenty-three.
I have eighty-three-thousand-three-hundred-and-ninety-one dollars and fifty-three cents.
Let's see, what's the, what's the date of your report?
Seven thirteen.
Okay, mine's six, this is an older report, six-twenty-three.
Seven thirteen, twenty-three, yeah.
Okay, so, okay, so it came down a little bit, a little bit on, okay. Well, I, well, I don't have, we're not doing apples for apples here based on what I have here.
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking at what you're talking about, the one that just came out, Patty just recently sent out.
On the five-year.
On the, you said it on the thirteen?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry about that.
I know, I'm looking at these numbers well and I'm not seeing them thinking, what are you looking, looking at?
Yeah, this should help here.
It shows a profit last year, and this year's not done, twenty-two, twenty-three. I mean
Well, what I'm saying is that do we need to raise it? If we're, if we're projecting to be at a two-hundred-and-forty-two-thousand-dollar profit, do we need to raise it as high as we're, as we're going here? Because that's already, that two-hundred-and-forty-two-thousand dollars is actually, I'm assuming you've factored into that the credit card costs and everything as well, right?
Yes.
That's a significant profit there. So, I can't find, I can't find it in my email, but that's fine.
At forty-five dollars for morning or afternoon and sixty dollars for both, the profit, considering everything we've just talked about, would be a hundred-and-fifty-six thousand dollars.
And why, and why do we, why do we want a profit? Like, why are we looking to have a profit from this program? Because again, I, just, our philosophies are different on it, right? I don't see it as a favor we're doing to parents. I see it as a, as what is required for society to function, so I don't
I understand it, but I don't see that as our job. I see our job as providing a service to families, as a school, okay? That is our job. Our job is not, you know, out there dealing with society, it's dealing with what we have here and now. And we're looking at five-dollar increase for both, the extended day and
That's for morning or afternoon.
Yeah, and then for single session as opposed to a double session.
Well, whether it's a role or not, why, why in this particular category are we seeking such a high margin of profit? Like, where's that profit being reinvested? Is it being reinvested into the program? Or is that going to offset other costs in the FTC budget, basically, you know?
No, not under FTC's budget.
So, what, where does that two-hundred-and-forty-two-thousand-dollar land at the end of the day?
Into the general budget and where it goes from there, Patty would have to help, but goes back to
General fund.
So, what, so, just to ask, Ms. Moore, are these earmarked for anything specifically?
No.
So, they just, they just drop in there and we spend it if we need it?
Yes, it would go back to the general fund.
Okay.
So, like, for this year, we had a profit of eighty-three thousand, right? I mean, could that roll over into the next year or?
It typically does and it typically all pulls, pulls into the general fund.
It'll just go back to the general.
And, and this year's not done, I mean, we still have
For summer.
Yeah, summer, summer ends Friday. Summer ends Friday, so all that staffing has to be paid. I assume you have a couple of trips.
Well, summer budget for June is on the twenty-two, twenty-three budget.
Okay.
And the summer budget for July
Twenty-three, twenty-four.
Is twenty-three, twenty-four.
That's what I was asking, yeah.
Yep.
Well, I mean
Have you calculated what's the break even so that the programs are sustained? What is the cost in order to operate the program without being in the negative?
My, my recommendation for that would be the forty-five dollars for the AM and PM, or, or PM and fifty-five dollars for both. Because that would give us a profit of sixty-nine-five, which would give us some legroom for increased supply costs and things like that. If you go, if you don't increase, increase the AM or PM, but you increase AM and PM from fifty to fifty-five, we would have a profit but of thirty-two thousand dollars, which doesn't give us much room for additional supply costs or anything else that might come up.
So, so now you're saying if we could survive at the two sessions being fifty-five instead of sixty-five?
We could, as long as we increase the AM or PM to forty-five.
That's a good start, I think it's something. Yeah, I mean, that way, you increase that by five and you're increasing this by, what, what is it now? It's two, five.
Five, five and five.
It's a five-dollar increase on both, which is kind of fair.
Yeah, it's not horrible.
That's kind of fair. And that way, we can see where it is next year.
Everything's gone up, but, you know, that, I think that's something that, you know, parents could likely absorb and, and concur to everything else that we're paying more for, you know? I mean, everybody knows things are more expensive. But I, I think in this year specifically, you know, I, I just think it's, the economy is just getting tighter and I think we need to get rid of, or get through this fiscal year and, and help our families out as much as they can. And hopefully, we see some changes in the economy coming into the following fiscal year and, and then maybe we can make some more adjustments then if need be. But I, I'd just like to keep it as tight without going into the, into the red, right? Let's cover our costs, let's have a little, a little margin for the unknown, you know? We pretty much operate all of our budgets like that. So, I mean, do we have kind of a consensus that that's where we'd like to go?
Well, I mean, I, my only concern is just I would want to ask Superintendent Moore and Patty, like, if you're used to getting that in the general fund, because, you know, I'm very concerned about our reserve dollars. So, does that get us even closer to that three percent? So, that's, I just would want to
What's the difference with our budgets?
When the budget is created, it's not, it's, it's based on actual revenues, actual expenses. So, it's not, like, we weren't banking on having two-hundred-and-twenty-thousand-dollar extra.
You're not planning on this, planning?
No, this, our budget's done before this even came up.
So, that's just like extra money?
Well, it would cover the additional cost. So, I mean, like, like it was stated, I mean, we, we submit a balanced budget for extended day. So, covering the cost is the essential thing so that we're not in the red.
So, your budget is like net zero for extended day? Because that's like on the
It shows a small, it, it would have shown, I'd have to look, but that's the, every single program has to cover itself. It doesn't always, like, you know, we have some of these programs, Beltar, Summit Iraqi, Community Ed. The budget that's submitted shows a loss because the costs are higher than the projected revenues. It is what it is. So, all that's factored in. But for extended day, we weren't projecting on a large profit.
Yeah, I'm good with the AM, PM to fifty-five dollars an hour, at least is a little bit of a
Yeah, I think, and that'll give us a year to see where it is next year.
Right, and it'll give us
And some, yeah, exactly, I agree, I mean, that's, that's a good rule.
And, and if, you know, if we can, if it is less expensive
We can lower it.
The, the automated debit, right, from, I know that may not work for some, but for some, it might be okay. And it might just be, you know, hey, guess what? Even though it may not be saving you money, it will save the school money if you do it with an auto debit. Some people will just be willing to do it just because it's helping out the school to switch over from credit card to the, the auto debit. Because I, I know that, and whenever, like, if I want to pay my FPNL bill, they'll only accept the, the auto debit from my checking account. They won't let you pay with a credit card because the fees are so much higher. So, I think there is a big difference in that number. Where we might just internally be able to save money by promoting that. You know, it's just a way of supporting our bottom line, helping us save more money.
Can we look into for the next year, like, like you're saying, an alternative way to pay?
Or even second semester? Is that asking too much?
I mean, the auto debit is already a part of RevTrack?
So, maybe I can promote it.
Credit cards are already part of RevTrack, some parents write checks. Okay.
I mean, and again, I'm just saying, encouraging others to pay with, with a mean, means other than a credit card. Right now, we're not passing on the fee, but I, I, everybody at this point knows, I mean, even some restaurants do it. They say, here's our cash price, if we were gonna charge you more, you know, but we're just gonna keep it easy for them and just not add, put that added in there. But maybe as a, as a direction for the next fiscal year, let's look at ways and maybe during this one, we can get them to start transferring off of the credit cards as much as possible. But I know for some people, that is a float to their paycheck, so they need that, right? So, I, I, I get that too, but it, for, for, like we said, not everybody may be in that situation. Those folks might be willing to make that switch just to help the school out, so.
So, for tonight, I will change it to forty-five dollars for AM or PM and fifty-five dollars for AM and PM.
And we're all, we all are good? Or that's a good start, and then we'll see where we go.
Thank you very much.
Can I, before you guys get up, since I have you here, I thought I heard something about we're already on a waitlist for extended day?
Right now, as of today, Benell has a hundred-and-twenty enrolled with sixteen on a waitlist. Beltar has a hundred-and-fifty with twenty-four on a waitlist. I'm waiting for confirmation with our staffing.
We're continuing to hire.
We're continuing to
So, it's because of the ratio
Yes.
That we, so we have the facility space.
Correct.
We just would not have the correct ratio because of staffing.
We have over four-hundred registered right now and we have sixteen and twenty-four, so, what's that, thirty, forty? Forty kids on a waitlist between Benell and Beltar.
Okay, because I, I will just, and I know we got consensus, I would just say, I would hate for a number of parents to not have extended day as an option because now it's not in the budget to have this additional labor. It just, this is such a tricky thing, right? And I just, I cannot state enough, it's, it is, to me, it's essential for us to vote, to run our schools. So, if there's consensus, awesome, I just want to make sure we have extended day for parents.
As long as we have staffing, I have six interviews Thursday and Friday as well for activity leaders. Our biggest problem is morning staff, six forty-five to eight forty-five. A lot of the activity leaders are high school students. If they have a first period class, they can't do it. If they don't, then they come. And that slows us down on clearing waitlist for, to have us within ratio for mornings. Afternoons, we don't usually have an issue, it's always mornings.
Makes sense.
Well, thank you.
All right, thank you both. Can I get a call? All right, moving along now to, we're going to eleven oh one Superintendent Job Description, Ms. Gavin.
Chair Masara, Board members, interim Superintendent Moore. I have before you the draft of the job description for the superintendent of schools. I sent this to you all as well. You can see this is the redline version. The redline that is contained in here is based upon my conversation and discussion with FSBA. And it is a job description that they have utilized within other districts that they have recently worked with when doing that superintendent search. So, the biggest change that you will see is with respect to the qualifications. Previously, it was a requirement for anyone who was making application to the district that they had to have their master's degree in school administration. The recommendation by FSBA is to remove that so that you would broaden your pool of potential applicants. We have always, when, at least during the tenure that I have been here wherein we have had to do superintendent searches, it has been using this job description where the requirement was that they had to have their master's degree in school administration with also the understanding that they also had been in school administration experience at a school level. That is being removed at the recommendation of FSBA. In addition to that, kind of updated the knowledge, skills and abilities to reflect more adequately what the superintendent does for a district and also capturing more so the statutory obligations. Also contained in this job description, the job goal was, again, changed to reflect that it is based upon the statute. That is what they, their responsibilities are controlled by. When you get down to performance responsibilities, additions were things like representing the interests of the board and the district and day-to-day engagement with parents, other citizens, community organizations and governmental agencies. This was based upon some of the comments that were made by you as board with respect to what you were looking for and wanting to have as your next superintendent. These were some of the items that were on your wish list of what you would look at that were not previously contained in the job description. It also reflected the requirements, again, that are outlined in statute, but more specifically put forth in the performance responsibilities such as number twelve, responsible for providing accurate records of all financial transactions, internal monitoring, data and reports as required by board policies, and then fifteen, which is overseeing the preparation of board meeting agendas, submit recommendations to the board relative to all matters requiring board action, attend or have a representative attend all meetings of the board. So, that just clarifies the expectations within their job description. I don't know whether or not you, as a board, had any additional items that you wanted to have included that are not contained in here or whether or not you are wanting the qualifications to revert back to only having applicants have that educational background.
Yeah, no, this will be, is this gonna come to
It will come to you again for action, yes, sir.
Okay, gotcha.
Just like any other job descriptions.
Okay.
On performance responsibilities, number four, I would just strike is, it says efforts and recommend layups on his.
Again, that was an old, that was an old job description.
Wow, good catch.
Yeah, it was an old job description.
Yeah, it just, there's no
Just so you know, even though it previously said that the last time this job description was updated in two thousand eighteen, I think that I put in here that it was actually last updated in two thousand and fifteen.
It was longer due.
Yes.
Good.
So, I, when I opened this up, kind of the first thing I did is I, I looked up a CEO job description and I job description, and I, the one that came up was from Sher. I think you guys know where I, I stand on this. My first thing is, and I reached out to Andrea just to confirm we could do this, I would love to see our, it's starting with our job title, if it's possible for our job title to be Chief Executive Officer at Superintendent of Flagler County Schools. I, Patty, are you CFO?
Yes.
Is Ryan Chief Technology Officer?
Yes.
So we, our cabinet is C-suite.
Get them changed.
So I don't know why our superintendent, you know, to, to me, title is really important these days, so that's something I would love the board to consider, is we actually give our superintendent it in title.
I think it's a great idea, because the cabinet changed upon Kathy's arrival, it's when they changed most of the.
I think the title is based off of statute, which says superintendent.
Oh, it has to be superintendent.
Well, it doesn't, it doesn't have to be, but it's based off of.
They are superintendent, and you can have two, someone can be an executive vice president and da-da-da of whatever.
My.
It would be, to me, it would be both.
Yeah.
You are Chief Executive Officer and superintendent.
So we'll just say, yeah, CEO slash superintendent.
My recommendation would be you would have superintendent of schools first, and then CEO, and the only reason is because there have been times, and when we have received applications for superintendent, and we get, like, superintendent for groundskeeper.
Like construction.
Yes, and, and construction, exactly. And so.
So why does that, why, so then to me, that doesn't make sense of why you would then, why is that an argument for putting superintendent first? Cause to me, if I'm, to me, Chief Executive Officer would then be first, by, would that be the argument?
I'm just saying, CEO, I guess, you know.
Well, be Chief Executive Officer and Superintendent of Schools.
Yeah, Flagler Schools.
If I was.
If you could find out from a dash, like, what is, you know, what we would have to do, I just think, so then, to me, that sets the tone, just some of the thoughts that I had. So I've got three college degrees, I've got my master's in education. I know you guys are probably not going to agree with me on this, Andrea really encouraged us to have the biggest, the most open, right? To me, we are at a master's required, a doctorate preferred. Is it possible for us to consider someone who has a bachelor's? Like, if someone is amazing at leadership, but they just never took, they just never took the time to get the master's, would we want to rule out, and I'm not saying we wouldn't, we wouldn't hire somebody who has that master's, that doctorate, but would we want to just completely not allow someone to apply unless they have it?
I, for one, would prefer to have our CEO and the head of the school district an educational background for a matter of leadership for everybody else with them. That's why I would prefer that. If they have their bachelor's, I think it somewhat dumps down that position, because this is an educational institution. That's what, that's what our prof, that's what we do. We make and educate the students in the society here. And we change that, I think that could be problematic of not getting our educators and staff to want to chief hire, or get better, or be stronger. That's, that would be my, my issue.
Yeah, but keep hearing you say that the word preferred.
Preferred, but I mean, doctorate's okay, I mean, I don't think we have to have a doctorate. I think that somebody that has the experience, which is in here, of upper-level management, I think that's, that's crucial, because it's different. It's different up here than it is in the classroom, you know? And, I mean, principals have it different, and it's not the same either, because now they're managing that body, but they've got to get to this goal, this is their goal. So that's my only concern.
So what, what was it that you, you ultimately were proposing, Ms. Hunt?
Well, what I, I mean, if I'm going to put it in a nutshell, I love the idea of our job description being open to the most candidates.
Well, give me the level of, so what was the?
They're saying a bachelor's.
A bachelor's.
So it would be a, a requirement would be a bachelor's, and the others would be a, maybe a preferred.
Well, I, I see bo, both arguments here, and I, I could, but I, I could support yours, Ms. Hunt, in the sense that, you know, we're, we don't, what we want to look for is somebody's leadership, what they've, what they've accomplished, where they've been, you know, it could, it could be, it could be advantageous to allow those people to apply. So I, I'm, obviously, this, this was just a presentation here, we're going to see this again, right? It's going to, we're going to see this again in, in August, is?
Well, yes, this will now come to the working agenda workshop for.
On the first?
On the first, and then it will come to a vote on the fifteenth.
Okay, gotcha.
So, but, but the preference would be, because we are trying to, FSBA is trying to get ahead of the curve with respect to knowing what they're supposed to be generating, is to kind of have an idea of whether or not you're wanting this to be changed even more significantly than what they have proposed.
Right, but they're not going to advertise it until we approve, right?
No, I mean, that's correct.
Okay, so, so yeah, I mean, I think this is a, an ongoing conversation, and we, but we should wrap up by the, by the first.
Yes, sir, that would be correct.
Exactly, so I, I would say, you know, when we're all here, maybe on the, on the first, we, we lock it down, we have a little more time to think it through, and, and then come with our best ideas there.
The one thing I would say is if you were lowering it down to a bachelor's degree, you may then want to increase the number of years of leadership and management, right? Because right now, it's requiring ten years of leadership, progressively responsible leadership management experience, either at a school principal or central office management desirable. So if you're only saying a bachelor's degree, then you would potentially be looking at someone right now that's thirty years old, would be eligible to apply.
Yeah, that's a good point.
I just feel like there's a lot of ways to get a master's today, I mean, you could do it from home, online.
Right.
And it just speaks to the amount of hard work you're willing to put in for your career. I don't want to say somebody with a bachelor's wouldn't be qualified, but it, it says something that you, when it's hard to go get your master's.
But for me, and I think, like, I get it, I think when it comes to your vote, like, that's, I just don't, it's all about, when someone's looking at that job description, they go, oh, they'll, they'll never hire me, right? Like, I don't, I don't, like, this oozes public school background. Like, if I'm from corporate, even though I've been in talent development, I, you know what I mean, I'm a fantastic leader, I ha, I am the person who's going to get us the results we want, I'm not even going to apply if I don't think I'm, I even stand a chance. And I think that's what Andrea was really trying to get us to understand, is you don't want to make it so specific, or so, that you are eliminating people. So I just want to make sure, I'm not saying this is who we're hiring, I'm saying, I just want to make sure our job description, description casts the widest net possible, so we get the person we want.
And I just want to put my opinion out there.
No, totally. So you, so we, the two of you are pretty big on must-have a master's, and so we'll talk about this.
Yeah, and a master's degree, so master's degree, you could have a master's in business, you could have a master's in.
Does it, can you scroll up? Does it currently say?
It just says master's degree.
Yeah, it just says master's degree.
It just says master's degree.
Doesn't say in education.
It doesn't say masters of education, which is what it previously said.
Which I think's opening it up quite a bit.
So currently, it's master's degree, doctorate preferred. So you could have a master's in business, you could have a master's in science.
Just out of curiosity, and I probably shouldn't ask this, but out of curiosity, Superintendent Moore, do you have your master's?
I have to have my master's in order to be principal in some of the positions that I field to the district.
So we have a requirement for principals, then?
Yes.
Oh, well then, okay, then that sways.
I see what you were saying, Chair Masara.
So if our principals have to have a master's?
Yes, they do.
I didn't, I didn't realize that.
It, it, I think that's the, it's the tone you want to set for your history.
No, I, I can, I can get on board.
Yeah, that's the reason.
I would love for there to be a better balance of not so much oozing public, you know what I mean, so specific, that it's really speaking more to a leader. But yeah, I can get on board with keeping the.
Yeah, I think that, that could also be accomplished by the, the advertising, and how we advertise the position, the FSBA, FSBA says, this is open to people that have been outside of the education field, it's just a matter of how you message it.
Right, totally.
Yeah.
So, one of, one of the things, the reason why FSBA was recommending it just say, instead of Florida Certification in School Administration and Supervision, which is that master's degree piece, having it say master's degree earned doctorate from an accredited institution. I will let you know that in the past two superintendent searches, we did have prior superintendents apply for the position, they were elected superintendents, and as a result, they did not have the school administration, because they were elected. But they were very well-qualified and had served their district in that elected position, but they were automatically turned away because they didn't need that qualification.
I see.
So this now would open it up to, if there had been an amazing elected superintendent that chose to not run again in their district or county, but wanted to apply here, they would be eligible to apply under this new job description, as long as they have a master's degree and an earned doctorate.
And I just want to state for the record, in case anybody's listening, if someone is thirty years old and qualified, because we are not ageist in this school district, that we would welcome them if they are the right.
I just, I just was trying to say.
Totally, just want to, on the record, we are open to all.
You are.
Okay, so anyway, thank you.
All right, and so then you'll, you'll make these, I, I like the idea about the CEO title, I think that's really sharp, and I think that's bringing in a lot of modern.
Yeah.
I mean, we're not, we've done this, had this one for a very long time, so let's make it last for a long time, I think that's a step in the right.
And it gives more messaging out to the community outside to understand the significance of how we're, we are formed as an organization.
Okay. All right, everybody good? All right, we're going on then to eleven oh two, and this is the FYO Strings Legal Opinion.
I actually, at two twenty, just received notification from Mr. Logan. He has been, he's in Live Oak at a North Florida college, is he, I guess, provides the legal counsel, and so he is ready for us to call him, so that, board, if you were to refresh your, board docs, I have posted up the opinion, and he is ready for a phone call.
We haven't even had, I, I literally, just literally came in while I was driving to here, I haven't even been able to read it yet. It was my understanding that we were going to receive this, and then we were going to have, when I spoke with you, that we were going to individually have time with?
I mean, I apologize.
A Zoom?
Yeah, so, I, this, this is the legal opinion, I mean, we're kind of running a little bit, I just got it last night, the opinion.
Okay, well, I just got it on my way driving.
Yeah, I know, I got it, I received it yesterday, and, and so I, I shared it out with you, because we also, we are down some people, I've been working with Ms. Wormack of making sure that our advertisement for our budget also gets published, so we've been doing a lot of different, wearing a lot of different hats.
Can you give us just?
A summary.
Can you give us an overview of what is in here at the moment?
Absolutely, so what you have, and if you want to. Bottom line is, what was reviewed by the Snippen and Stallman Law Firm, and Mark Logan specifically, was the funding of the Flagler Youth Orchestra Strings Program and how it was handled. They recognized that there is serious flaws and issues with respect to how it was not under audit on an annual basis, because it is our taxpayer ID number, and when our taxpayer ID number is utilized for an account, it does require us to have an annual audit of those accounts and how they're funded. It also requires that when our taxpayer ID number is utilized, that we are in compliance with how we manage that account. So the bookkeeper has certain requirements of when they make their deposits, how they receive their funds, how they document it, and all of that is being covered by the audit that is being conducted right now by the outside auditors. But as far as whether or not there is an issue with our having this special project account, where the fundraising and donations were received into that account, because there was never any commingling of public funds with private funds, when any funds that were paid into this public fundraising account, or, into this donation fundraising account, when they were asked in two thousand and twelve to start contributing towards the salaries of the instructors, they issued a check to the district's account, and it was deposited in the district account, and those funds were then paid to those employees to cover the independent contractors' account. The one thing that they did state was superfluous and unnecessary, but they understood, was the utilization of an MOU. They said, because in essence, it is the district's program, and so we were in essence entering into an MOU with ourselves, because the Flagler Youth Orchestra Strings Program was not a separate organization in and of itself, and so, but they saw the benefit to there being an understanding for the director that was managing and having to raise the donations for that certain dollar amount, so that there was an understanding of the expectation of the private fundraising that had to take place on an annual basis in order to cover all of those costs. But they said that that could be achieved by a simple memorandum that would be utilized, a memorandum to district, a memorandum to the independent contractors of the expectations.
So what I'd like to propose, since, I don't know, has everybody been able to read this and digest it?
I glanced it as right before.
Okay. I'm just not prepared to, to ask any questions with the council, because I just haven't had time to review it. I'd like to, either one, request that we move this to the first, and, so that we can at least have some time to digest it and see everything, and, and then maybe have that phone call.
Do I have a consensus for that? Does it make sense?
I just have a question, well, where is the audit? Is it done yet? Where are we at?
The audit is not done, that's Ms. Wormack's side.
Okay.
At the house.
Have you heard anything?
Yes, they have finished their, their work, their field work is what it's called, and they have sent us the follow-up information as to some of their findings, so Carrie and I are reviewing that. I think they might have some questions that we need to follow up with HR on, so I will reach out to them and see an expected time, as long as we don't have any issues getting the information. I'm hoping it's something we'll be able to put on the three o'clock on the first, on, on August first. So I should know if that's possible within the next, by the end of tomorrow.
Okay, well, then I think that kind of sums up, we can put FYO on the agenda for the first meeting, and we can wrap this all up together at that point, to have the audit.
Hopefully.
Hopefully, and we'll be able to talk about this in more, greater depth, because it gives you time. Everybody good with that?
And I will send out a email after I talk to the auditors to, just to let you all know whether it's going to be on there or not, just as a time.
And also, just since we're talking about FYO right now, there are several items that I had asked that be turned over to the district, and it's been several weeks since I made those requests. One of them was the, the transfer the domain over to us, so we have that domain and control the website, because it still has all the old information, and we're going to have to rework that and re-message it. An important thing, too, is the, the MailChimp account, because that has all the contact, the emails that we can start communicating to the parents out there in the program, letting them know where we're at, where we're going, that's an important piece. And there was also the PayPal. going. That's an important piece. And then there was also the PayPal and the Fundly accounts, the access to the backend, the control over those accounts. And, and there were several bank statements that were also additionally requested. What has been the response from Ms. Tristam on these requests?
I have just met with Ms. Gavin today. We, my staff has sent out several emails and, and made some phone calls to try to get the information. And we, as of today, still do not have the information that we have requested a few times. So, I have turned that over to Ms. Gavin just a few hours ago and gave her the correspondence just so she can take it to whatever the next letter.
Literally at twelve o'clock.
Yeah, literally just a couple hours ago.
So, what, okay, go ahead.
No, I was gonna say I'll follow up with Mr. Deesing on the domain. And I will let you know about that.
Mysteries, I know you're looking to bite the bit there.
No, no, I'm fine. This is, Brian has reached out and is working that out to get the domain information taken care of so we can get control of that.
Okay, wonderful. That's good. That would be one that we can maybe.
That's the only one that's in-house. But all the other ones, we have requested and we have not received the information.
So, do we, do we have the username and passwords like to, to Fundly or PayPal? Were the, those were the, those were the fundraising accounts? Do we have control over those?
No, we have the bank account. No, no, is the short answer. No.
So, unless she hands us that information, we're not gonna know?
Correct. We don't, we can't access it. The only thing we have access to is the QuickBooks files.
And she's not being, not working with us as she stated she would.
We have not received responses.
So, what is our, Ms. Gavin, what, what is our, our, our next step here? Do we send a demand letter? What, what do we do to get somebody to comply, to turn over?
Yeah. So, I'll, I'll reach out to her and let her know specifically, giving her an itemization of what I think that there's been multiple people reaching out to her with multiple requests. I think if we provide her a single request, itemizing, this is what we need, boom, you know, one, two, three, four, plain, simple, easy to request that information. I, I don't see that, that should be a problem. The one thing that we can give you a little bit of maybe comfort is knowing that those accounts that were donation accounts, Ms. Womack is still receiving funds into that account because the account was switched over.
The new bank account was switched over.
The new bank account is the receiver of those funds.
Yeah, I was made aware of that. But there is, there, in order for us to, to manage it.
But to manage it.
Yeah, we need to have that, the backend access to that platform.
Absolutely, absolutely. And so.
Okay.
I would call for you to get that.
Yeah. I think, I think making a single item, you know, instead of multiple people reaching out, a single item request. I'm not aware of what additional bank statements were being requested.
We have requested all of the bank statements since inception, since they are the, the school district's account.
Sure. Although I don't know whether we're gonna be able to get all of them since two thousand five.
I think the request, yeah, no, I think the request was to the extent that she has.
Right. Well, I mean, the, the thing is that we, if, if she doesn't provide them and we, and we need them, because I know there's some FOIA requests regarding banks that we'll have to go to, we'll have a significant expense to have to, to get those from the bank.
Well, we have, so a FOIA request, we are obligated to provide, under a FOIA request, the records that the district has. We don't have an obligation to make or create. And some of the records are being requested from banks that don't exist anymore. And so.
Well, PNCs would have several years of.
They will have their statements, but, but we didn't always start with them.
But if we don't get the, the statements from Ms. Tristam, we're gonna have to pay, we would have to pay the bank to, to access them.
Well, actually, to respond to a FOIA request, we would notify the person making the FOIA request of the cost.
So, they would pay it.
So, we would say, you have requested this. We have notified you. They are not in our possession. We, at this point, our auditors have not indicated that they require that information in order for them to perform what they need to do. If you all, as a board, were to say, we want ten years of records, if that were your lift, then yes, we will need to pay for it and it will be at our expense.
Right.
But if someone is making a request and it's for documentation we do not have, we notify them, the cost will be this. Do you want us to move forward with that?
They bear that cost. Okay.
It's no different than when we have a cost that's gonna be beyond thirty minutes for us to finalize. And we say, the cost for our employee to complete that request will be X amount. Do you want us to continue to provide you that? If they do, happy to do it.
All right. Ms. Lannister, question?
Well, and I, I missed, I was virtual for one of our workshops, so this maybe was discussed, but have we as a board or has the cabinet looked at policy? This is a mess. And so are there policies that we need to create, tighten up? Because the fact that we have, we keep calling this program a Flagler Schools program, but it doesn't look, feel or anything like a Flagler Schools program. We have someone who's not a Flagler Schools employee who's holding passwords, right? It's not under Ryan. It's not under, like, I, like, none of this feels good to me. You know, when we look at our other programs, football, whatnot, that is a stipend that goes to a Flagler Schools employee. So, the fact, well, so I think you're picking up what I'm laying down, right? Like, what, so, because we can't go back in time and change where we have been, but I wanna make sure, as, as one board member, I would, I would love to make sure that this kind of situation doesn't happen again. And if this is truly our program, how do we make sure this is truly our, our in-house program?
That, that started, me too. Okay. So, one of the things that the district did, so first of all, by shutting down that bank account and placing it under district with district personnel being the people who are able to access the account, who are going to have that information provided to them, who will be overseeing the bookkeeping of it, who will be the writer of the checks on the account. By doing that, that starts placing it in line with our other internal accounts that we currently have. That's thing one. Thing two is that we never had it placed under any department for oversight or any school for oversight. So, by placing it under the curriculum department for oversight, that will also provide someone to be responsible for it, to make sure that if there's anything that's being done that might be questionable or out of the ordinary, that that, that the Mr. Reeves, who is currently the Director of Curriculum, he would be at the forefront making some questions as to what is going on. The fact that we have an independent contractor assisting us in carrying out the program is not in and of itself something that requires policies to be created because that's where that memorandum comes into place where you would, and, and the job description that we are affording that the independent contractor is gonna be fulfilling, that's where a lot of those pieces can be covered, like the expectations. This is what you will do. You will be responsible for fundraising. You will be responsible for ensuring that the instructors are qualified instructors. You are responsible for, and creating that job description gives us that security that the person who's handling that, although as an independent contractor under a ten ninety-nine pay, is still performing to our expectations. Providing that audit piece that wasn't there also makes sure that anything that has to do with fundraising, because we do have in our manual for finance and our internal accounts, we have how fundraising has to be conducted. We have how deposits that are received and donations that are received, how they have to be documented and how they have to be placed onto or put into the bank account within a timely period of time. And so because we have that, that comes under audit, that will control that piece to it as well.
So, I mean, it just, just one follow-up question, because I can't think of a better way to say it. To me, all of this happened because we had a superintendent who did this. Okay. If we could go back in time, what was missing? Because this should have probably never happened the way that it happened.
It wasn't put under a specific department.
So, does.
Or school.
Or school. So, did that superintendent break a policy in doing it? Or do we not have a policy that exists that could inform that superintendent that what you are doing, going to a bank with, right? Like, I, I just.
I can't, yeah, I can't say whether or not back in two thousand and five, what statutes.
Well, I'm looking for today.
No.
I'm saying like, today is there, is there a policy missing? Because when we talk about Mr. Reeves, he reports to the superintendent, right? So, he's not gonna tell her what she's, you know what I mean? Like, so it's the board who needs to tell the superintendent what you ought and ought not do. So, do we have that language? Anyway, I don't wanna repeat this.
Does state statute at least prevent a, a, a non-employee of the school to never be a signer on an account? Or, I mean, I guess that's, is that kind of, do we have a policy or?
I'm, I'm, yes.
How do you prevent this from happening again?
Sure. So, so I'm not sure. And, and that would be a, so if you had a ten ninety-nine employee and you wanted to say, I don't want them to be a signer on the account, I'm not sure is that's necessarily something that you would want either. Somebody could be a signer on the account as long as you had somebody in the district that's also a signer on the account and also as long as you had oversight on that account. We didn't have that oversight taking place. That's your error.
Why would we ever have a non-school employee writing a check for public?
From an internal account.
From an internal account.
I'm not thinking about a booster account, but like, I'm talking about an internal account.
When, when would that be needed?
It's not, it's not our practice. Every, well, with the exception obviously of strings, all of our internal accounts are, the saunas are either a director or a principal.
A director, a Flagler Schools employee.
Yes, a Flagler Schools employee. So, I think, Kristi, I think what we can do, like, I know as long as I've been here, the only people with the authority to open or close bank accounts is the superintendent or the CFO. I'm not sure if that's written in policy somewhere, but I think to answer your question, we can, Kristi and I can take a look at the Internal Funds Policy seven oh five and see if we need to just add some language as far as like the actual bank account piece of it.
Yeah, because I think this is something you would think, it would never happen. You wouldn't even think that you needed a policy for this until it, it happened. So.
Right. But here's the thing. The person who's authorized to open an account, listen to what Ms. Womack just told you. The person authorized to open bank accounts are the superintendent and the CFO.
But if the policy had read that no, that a non-employee cannot be on a public schools account.
Internal account.
Intern, she would have never been on, she and Pierre would have never.
Not be a signer, you mean?
Yeah, a signer.
I don't know why, I don't know why, I don't know why, I guess I don't know the difference, but.
Yeah.
I think we need to look at the internal fund.
Yeah, well, look at that. I mean, it makes total sense.
No, and I.
That was under the radar for, for all time.
Yeah, and I completely understand. And, and I think to answer your question, to answer all the questions, it could be us recommending adding one or two bullet points that's gonna shut down that.
You guys, you guys have the knowledge.
If there's a loophole, let's close the loophole.
I just don't, I don't like the language of standard practice or what we've always done. I'm a policy lady. This was broken. How do we fix it with policy?
Yeah. Ms. Gavin and I would just take a look at it and we will, can bring back a proposed change to the policies.
Thank you.
That's good. Take a look at it and then we'll.
If, if there's one that's needed.
Okay. Well, let us know.
Yeah, we'll just read through it in much more detail and regroup.
I think that's good then. Thank you. Any other questions?
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. So, we belong to old business. We're down with old business, everybody.
Yeah, I do have old business. This is just in, in reference to an email that we should have all received from Mr. Walker regarding Beltair Swim and Racket Club and some changes to the fee schedule that were set to need to be done based on response from the insurance, one of the insurance companies.
You know what? Mr. Walker is here, so I'm gonna ask you, Joshua, would you please come up here? Because you're right. We just got, received this information and it is impactful. Say please.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Chair, Superintendent for School Board Members.
Okay. So, go ahead.
Yeah. So, following our July eleventh Agenda Workshop meeting, that's when we kind of came up with a consensus from the board and what we wanted to move forward with the fee schedule for the racket club. That included splitting off the pool and sauna, being able to charge an additional fee for that to our insurance members. By offering a basic membership, they would be able to get access to the gym and tennis courts for no additional cost. In addition to that, we also discussed an administrative fee of fifty dollars annually for paid members and insurance members. Following that meeting, we reached out to the insurance companies to double check just to make sure we would be in good standing before vote in regards to that structure in addition to the fee. And the feedback we've received from those companies is the structure is in good shape. We can charge an add-on fee for a pool and for a sauna because we're charging an add-on for everyone. However, an administrative fee slash annual fee, we are not able to charge our insurance members, which was that fifty dollars.
Okay. And was that across, was that just from, at the time when I received the email, it was just one of them that said that?
So, as of right now, Silver Sneakers gave us the definite. Now, Silver Sneakers is our majority. That's our largest insurance.
That's the biggest one.
Yeah, we have roughly between five hundred and six hundred registered Silver Sneakers users. We also heard back from Florida Healthcare that they were ninety-nine percent sure that they could not, we would not be able to honor that. So, we're still.
Can I throw this other suggestion, just idea? Silver Sneakers, I believe, allows eight visits a month. That's what they're paying for. It's something around there, six to eight, whatever. I think.
For Silver Sneakers, it might even be eleven. They're one of our largest ones.
Okay. So, they, they allow X amount of numbers a month. If somebody goes to the facility every day, twenty days, could we charge for those additional use, since they're now met, they're, they're contracted?
No. So, so per our contract, we have caps set in place that that's the maximum compensation we can get per that number.
Total, max. That's what I wanted to ask.
And we have to allow them, even if they go above that, we have to let them. We can have restrict their access to the facility.
So, they pay for eight, but they can have thirty?
Yes, for any of the four, they can go as many days. Correct.
Well, I, yeah, that's, that's, that's the big, that's, that's been always my biggest contention with the insurance. It's, it's, it just, we don't get the, they don't pay us every time they come. And we do have some that are frequent users. But, I mean, I would say that, well, in, in light of this, if we wanna move forward, it sounds like we, we can't charge the administrative fee to the insurance company. But I think that that would be a fair trade-off because the, they, we're gonna, we're, we're gonna receive the additional revenue for the pool if they decide to use a pool, right? Plus, we will receive the up to, in that case, maybe eleven, uh, membership payments for their visits, right? So, and if we look at it for apples for apples comparison, is that, okay, maybe they're not paying us an administrative fee, but in fairness, they are, there, there is some cost passed on through their insurance policy that they're paying to get that added value to use the gym, right? So, in, in, in offset of our, our regular members that are not insurance, you know, they, they, they're, they're not paying, they may not be paying that insurance fee. They might be on a different type of plan, Medicare, whatever. And so, but I think it's very important that we maintain the monthly, more so than the administration fee upfront on the insurance, to get that twenty-five dollars for, for the pool than to get that administrative fee upfront. And the reality is, is that what the public and the membership has to come to terms with is that the intention of these insurance plans is for people to have access to a gym where they can exercise, to work out and be healthier. And, and the insurance companies feel that offsets their overall cost. If you have a healthier insurance base, you're likely to have less cost of insurance, of payouts. So, but the pool is, is a pool and then, but a gym is a gym. And as I've said in previous things where we kind of came up with this format, because some people have said that this was just pulled out of the air, right? And according to some emails that are circulating right now and some of our local blogs, right? But I'll, I'll ask you, Mr. Walker, in the beginning of this, right, did I, or did I not bring in a consultant to talk to us about this, this program, its possibility, right?
So.
That gave us, gave us some sort of, and this person worked for, negotiates these contracts for, and then. That gave us, gave us some sort of, and this person worked for, negotiates these contracts for, an insurance company, right? And, uh, she was willing to dedicate, donate her time to tell us how that, those contracts are negotiated with gyms, and what they actually are, are meant for, is that correct?
Correct, you got me in contact with, with an individual who was a member or a representative of one of these insurance companies. And that was in the beginning of this year, I believe, it was early, late winter, early spring. And through those conversations is when we were able to understand that, hey, what we charge on a per-use basis, what we're able to get on a per-use up to that cap, is either at or above industry standard. Um, and then from there, we were able to further explore possibly doing an add-on or, or things like that.
Yeah, so we didn't pull this idea out of the air, we did get some consultation. And secondly, we had real-world examples, uh, for example, Empower Fitness, they had a, a, they were accepting insurance memberships before, and, uh, you had the full run, but then, they changed it, that if you wanted to do the classes, that, that, they realized, that they were told, "We only have to provide the gym equipment." So then, now, if you, if you wanna do this, the classes, uh, yoga, TRX, pick your flavor, uh, you pay an additional amount. And mind you, they're charging, I, I go to that gym, and I pay almost seventy dollars a month, because I want access to those classes. If I was just having the gym alone, it would be about thirty, thirty-five dollars. So, um, ultimately, at the end of the day, we, uh, we can see this is what other practices that other gyms are, are, um, putting in our community. And if you're just using just that one gym in comparison, again, I, I, I think it nets out at, at what a month if you do the annual, uh, for the pool and the, and the, and the gym?
So, as it relates to our insurance members, if they choose to mod pool and sauna access and sign up for Aquatics Plus, uh, they would pay on an annual basis two hundred and fifty dollars, which equates to paying about twenty eighty, twenty dollars and eighty-three cents a month.
Okay, and if you have, and if you're a non-insurance member and you want everything, how much is that?
You're paying four hundred and twenty dollars annually, plus the fifty dollar administrative fee. Without that administrative fee, it averages out to about thirty-five dollars a month.
Okay, so again, half of, of what, um, say, I'm paying at this gym, there's no pool, there's no tennis court, there's no sauna. This has superior, uh, offerings than there. So, in, 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 ultimately, we are, we are providing a great value at the current rates we are. So, I just wanna get that out there, because there's, I, I just think there's a lot of misinformation being put out there. Um, and I just wanna set the record straight, so, thank you for, for that.
So, are, sorry, just to-
Yeah, I'm done.
Are, are we gonna be able to put that fee for the pool and for the insurance members?
We were not going to be able to do an administrative fee for, uh, pool and sauna, in general, for insurance members. We are able to move forward with doing an Aquatic Plus membership, to charge an additional fee for pool and sauna access.
So, they'll pay monthly, but they're just not gonna pay that fifty dollar administrative fee, one-time administrative fee? So, we'll still get them, if they want the pool through their insurance, they'd only have access to the gym, right? Uh, unless they pay for the Aquatic Plus.
Gym and tennis courts, correct.
And then, yeah, and so then, if they wanna use the pool, they'll have to pay between twenty and twenty-five dollars, depending on where they go, annual or monthly, right?
Correct, and that's reflected in the PowerPoint presentation, that's up for vote at six P M. this evening. It'll show, uh, it'll show that breakdown, it'll point out to where the administrative fee is excluded for insurance members. Uh, that gives you, that has the most up-to-date information, and which we'll be voting on this evening.
Is somebody gonna be monitoring that?
That's, that's my, that's my issue. How is that gonna be?
Abs, absolutely.
How you gonna know, I, like, if I were gonna join, I'd probably just join the gym, 'cause it's the cheapest. But I'd probably still go over there and use the sauna, and use the pool. How you gonna know the difference?
So, absolutely, so we're also currently in the process of updating our software to Gym Master. And through that, we're going away from Swire, Stan, or Stan code cards, going to key fobs. So, if you're paying for your basic membership, which is your gym and your tennis court, it'll be a black key fob. It'll be touchless, or it'll have a RFID reader, you'll touch that, be able to get access. If you are paying for the Aquatic Plus, it'll be a blue one. Currently, we evaluated the site, if you come in, pretty much if you have a membership, everyone's gonna be good to go to the gym. If you have a membership, it's going to include the gym and tennis courts. What we looked at is, how do we restrict the sauna and the pool? So, when we looked at our fencing, we're adding additional fencing on the sides of the sauna, so that you cannot just subvert our staff, and go between the gym and access the sauna. There'll be additional fencing placed there, to where anyone that needs to get to the pool and sauna will have to come through a checkpoint. At, those that have visited the center know, if you come out the back of the gym, you can go down a sidewalk, and then there's a gate. We'll have that gate locked. If someone would like to use the gym and the pool, they'll just have to take one of our gym attendants with, they'll be able to verify their membership type, and they'll be gained access to that part of the facility. Other than that, they'll be able to come through the pool office, where the lifeguard stand is, and we'll be able to verify through there.
Yeah, I knew there was gonna have to be changes.
Yeah.
That, that, that makes a lot of sense. My, still my biggest concern is the four twenty for the adult annual pass. Last year, we increased it fifty dollars. Not correct, went to three hundred, correct?
I think so. Yes.
Yeah, right, okay, so we increased it fifty dollars. Now, we're taking it from three hundred, that's a, another hundred, we're gonna increase it a hundred and twenty dollars. That's my concern, that's a lot of money.
But over the year?
I, I know, it's, yeah, I know, it's a hundred and twenty dollars over the year. How, I mean, how will we, they gonna pay that monthly? Can they pay that thirty-five dollars a month?
They can pay it quarterly.
They can pay it quarterly?
Yep. So, four hundred and twenty divided by three, or, divided by four.
And that would give them full access to everything?
Yes.
Okay, and that, and, you know, that's, that's what I'm hearing the biggest complaint about, 'cause you're right, there's a lot of misinformation out there that's not accurate. And, um, we certainly don't want, we're not gonna break the law, we don't wanna do something we cannot do. You know, now if they're patient, we can't, we thought we could do the administrative fee, but we couldn't charge for the, uh, additional twenty dollars. But now it's reverse, we can't do the administrative fee for insurance.
From the get-go, we've been able to split it out, that was something we received early guidance on.
Yeah, that, that's, that's what, I mean, they were willing to pay the three fifty. So, technically, we're seventy dollars off. Because the three fifty would have been three hundred plus the fifty for each person. And that's, then they were happy with that, they thought that would be good. I don't know if that's still something we should consider. Because we know that, that, yes, they said they wanna pay more, but they don't wanna lose an arm and a leg.
But that's not an arm and a leg.
It is, it is, it is the seniors on set.
Well, I know, but even still, that, that, uh, this is below, this is actually a below-market rate for what we're offering. There's just, I, I don't, even if you go to an adjacent county, I don't know that you, what you could find, I mean, I don't know what the, if you would go to Ormond and the Y, uh, isn't it in Ormond Beach, I think? Yeah, I, I mean, I don't, I don't even know what they charge, I mean, that, that would probably have, uh, on a larger scale, but similar facilities that we're offering, um, you know, what does it cost to go to, to the Y in Ormond? And if, if a Y was to open here, that, they would have to start paying those rates also, right? So, essentially, if, if we're below the rates of a Y for all the offerings, then I, I, I think that we are in a, in a very good, um-
Are we? Do you know what the Y is, if any chance of it?
I'll pour it up right now.
You probably do, because this is your thing. You're the expert here.
So, for instance, for the Y, for a basic access to their wellness center, and this is pulled up via their website, they charge a fifty dollar joining fee, but then fifteen dollars a month for access to their wellness center.
And that's just the gym?
Correct, they also offer a plus individual membership, which includes access to all YMCA branches, wellness center, group exercise classes, uh, Lamel's classes, cycling classes, pool access, water aerobics, basketball gym discount program.
Yeah, so everything is up.
And that's forty-two dollars a month, uh, for that.
So, we're at thirty-five?
I don't know the exact number, but like, if you live in Plantation Bay and pay their club fee, I know it's over a thousand dollars a year.
Yeah, that's private club, too, yeah, that's Y. You know, the same thing, if you're at the Havoc, you can, you live in Havoc, you get a big-
But it has all those things, the gym, the pool.
I'm just saying, we're, we're, I don't really believe that we're charging, you know, we're not gouging, as some people have said. It, it, these are, these are still bo, below-market rates to, to access these facilities. And we have some serious costs here. I mean, we're heating that pool, I, I think the last estimates, just to keep the pool heated, which that's a luxury in itself, is about, close to eight to ten thousand a year, right?
Yeah, so this past year, we're right in that range.
Right, so I mean, like, and that's another value that we're offering, that, that can be used year-round. You know, some pools close in the winter, you know, we're, we're open, and we have that extra staffing cost all year-round. I mean, it's a real, I mean, this is a real thing, I mean, um, this is not just like a summer swim program, it's a real, it is, I know people don't like to call it that, but it is, it's, it's operating like a business, under the, the control of our school district, you know? And, you know, businesses need to, you know, we, we can maybe justify losses or a break-even, because we're, we're, that's not our goal. Um, but, uh, a normal business would have been bankrupt already if they had this operation, so.
So, just to pay for a family, like, in a private club in Plantation Bay, it's twenty-four hundred dollars a year, just as a comparison?
Oh, yeah. Uh, there's golf, I believe there's golf involved in that, too.
No, that's, that'll be more. But I mean, again, th, th, these are all diff, these are just not, more offerings out there, right? Like, I mean, this is competition, there's other places to, that you could go. Um, I think we're the best value in town, when it comes to, um, a pool and everything. But we just gotta bring these to real level, and we're gonna start, we wanna, we're gonna bring in new members, uh, and advertise. They're gonna see that, wow, if they really see value in this, they're gonna say, wow, for thirty, I can get all that? I mean, I understand that some people that are, that are paying now, are, no one likes to pay more than they are now. But, but if, it's, it's different when you're raising it up to a rate where it's like, that's just ridiculous. Like, where did you even come up with that, right? I mean, I think we've justified what we're charging here, based on competition, based on all the amenities. Uh, and mind you, the majority of the people, I wanna remind everybody, of our membership, ninety percent approximately, are on the insurance plans. So, most of those people, they're only going up about twenty dollars and change a month, if, if they wanna continue to use the pool. We only have, what, a hundred and, uh, thirty?
So, as, as, as far as paying adults, paying members, right now, we have a hundred and sixty-two paying adults and twenty-nine paying students.
Okay.
So, a total of a hundred and ninety-one that pay for a membership.
So, the fee increase actually affects a very small percentage of our membership. But it increases our revenue on where we're getting basically a very low amount, because we're only getting the minimum, um, payouts for the min, for the maximum amount of shows that they have a month, right? And so that means we're still gonna get that and that twenty dollars. I mean, I, I, if we really want a hope to keep this pool open in the future, rather than just letting this thing, um, ev, eventually die, we have to, we have to have, uh, we have to get to, to a higher revenue point. And I think that this is, for an insurance member to pay twenty dollars a month, where they-
That's access to the pool.
Access to everything, everything, and they're technically paying zero now. Whether you wanna say they paid in your insurance or not, I mean, that's fine. But as far as we're concerned, we're getting very, zero from, out of their pocket. And, and, so, I, when I, I think I did the calculation, if, if, if eight hundred of, if half of the eight hundred stay on, we're still at about eighty thousand dollars a year in revenue off of that. I mean, that almost fills the gap to get us down to a student-focused facility, where we can say, hey, at least we can justify that, 'cause it's gonna cost us to keep the pool open for that cost anyways, right? And if we can keep a community service going, and, and, and not be in such a hole, okay, and maybe we can keep improving on that. Um, so, but this, this could be the solution, uh, but not, go ahead.
Yeah, well, no, I, I, like I said, I, I might, I don't wanna see us trying to build the, the profit of this organization off of the backs of the people that have been involved for a very long time. And that's what you, we're doing, I mean, with this, we're gonna have to, because I, I'm afraid that we could be pushing them out of membership. And that's not gonna help us or help them. So, I, that's such a fine line of where membership needs to be, and how much we need to charge to, to make it work. And I, I, I agree, I'm not sure how much, you know, of the, how many, how many insurance people do we have, it's like ridiculous.
So, there's about eleven hundred that are registered, that have shown up within the past eighteen to twenty-four months. When we did our last run between July one of twenty-two to December thirty-first, we presented numbers at our February workshop, about six hundred and seventy-two unique users for insurance.
Yeah, so there's your insurance users, you know, and I think that, at, at that price, I think that's reasonable enough, they may stay on. It's that annual, that, I, I mean, it prob, how much is gonna cost, probably cost them less if they go through their insurance, a lot less than the four twenty.
But they, they would, they'd be doing it all right, but they would be doing-
We're still gonna charge fifty dollars to everybody except the insurance people, is that correct?
As, as a part of this fee proposal, yes.
Yeah, so they'll be paying four seventy, that's a four, a four hundred and seventy dollar annual fee, for our, for our hundred and sixty-some members. Yeah, and the kids, the students, too, would be paying that?
No, the, the administrative fee is just for adult members.
All right, so it's not the students, okay.
Yeah, we get, we get our students.
All right, well, that's good, I bet you hear that. That, that's a big jump, three hundred to four seventy. You say you only pay fifty dollars once, but that's true, but it's still four hundred and seventy you pay for a year, three hundred.
Well, I would say, um, if we were, if we were trying to look for some sort of compromise here, uh, on that annual, is, I would say that maybe we just, on, on the initiation fee, maybe just take that, keep our, keep the membership rates the same. 'Cause we, we, remember, I, I get what you're saying about the, the existing members and being sensitive to their budget. Um, but, um, we're, we're gonna be marketing to new members, and there, that is part of this proposal, is to have, uh, radio advertising. So, we're gonna be also trying to add new members, right? And so we want them to come in at that new rate, but I, that is, is below-market. But that will, I think that'll be attractive in, in, when, when marketing the, the, to new, to new potential members. Um, so, but maybe if we lower the initiation fee just a little bit, from fifty dollars to say, um, forty dollars?
Uh, I don't think that's gonna do anything that I group, I mean, the only way it would work is if we, we eliminated the fifty dollars for those, they're paying, they're paying a full membership with four twenty. That is your thirty-five dollars a month, and eliminate the administrative fee. At least get them within a hundred and twenty dollars instead of a hundred and seventy dollars, that they would be adding to their fees. I, I don't even know if that, I still think they're gonna, they're gonna bargain that, too.
Can we talk about the administrative fee just real quick?
Yeah.
Um, what is the process, when someone is new, to sign up? And let me, like, give you just one other thing, that, if I'm Silver Sneakers, can I come in, I sign up, we have labor involved at that point, where we are submitting paperwork, and we've now spent money on labor to get them signed up? Could they take that labor, and we never get a dollar, because they've signed up, but they've never used the facility, therefore, we don't bill insurance, are you?
Yeah, that happens. You'll have people that come through, they wanna sign up, and then, hey, they maybe not come in and utilize the facility. And that's why we'll have eleven hundred that we have registered, but it's six hundred and seventy-two for the first six months.
So, 'cause that, what I would love just to really nail down is, what is, what is the real labor involved with the sign-up? Because if you're gonna charge a fee, an admin fee-
Yeah.
It's because we are paying somebody, which is expensive, to process my application, my whatever. Do you have an idea of how many minutes per application it would take our employee to process?
Varies based on the person. So, sometimes we'll have people, thankfully, due to our, our website being updated, people can submit it on my questionnaire, say, hey, I'm interested to be an insurance member, or I'm an insurance member, can you please see if I qualify? They'll put their insurance code into it, and we're able to, on the front end, see it before they come in. However, you do have people that'll come in and go, hey, I'm with Silver Sneakers, or I'm with Florida Healthcare, can you check to see if I'm able to be here? It, it varies based on the person, we, we typically see those interactions range between fifteen to thirty minutes per person.
Wow, 'cause that's a lot. So, is there a way, 'cause what I'm not cool with, and I know I, I don't have a say in it, but the insurance company saying, you, we're gonna cost you fifteen minutes, thirty minutes per person, and we're not gonna give you a dime for it. So, is there a way that, until it's that person's first visit, or they get charged a visit? Right, like, we're not gonna process you unless you're in for a first visit?
Unfortunately, we cannot restrict that, you know, if they're gonna come and say, we, we wanna sign up for it, we have to take, go through the steps to, to check and verify that they're able to join, give them a card, and give them a tour of the facility, or at least get them out there, because for all we know, that is their first time they're gonna use the facility.
Of our members, how, are, are they mostly individuals or couples, or, within that mix of a hundred and seventy or so? Are you finding that, that they have a, a, a husband, wife, or something like that? Um, 'cause I'm wondering, what if we, what if we just made it per, per household?
I think you have a lot of, as far as paying memberships go, probably more individuals.
There are more individuals?
Yeah, I mean, we see, we see couples here and there, we have a lot of that when it comes to insurance, 'cause they're both, you know, husband, wife, are signed up under the same plan, wife wants to go, oh, yeah, I'll sign up, too, and then, maybe he doesn't go, but-
So, a twenty dollar administrative fee, if we're paying that person, let's say we're paying that person processing fifteen dollars an hour, let's say they take up to thirty minutes, that's seven fifty. I would say, at a minimum, we're wanting to recoup where we can- I would say, at a minimum, we're wanting to recoup where we can, what it is costing us to sign that person up, because the administrative fee is paying for the administration, not for the pool, not for the sauna. That's where the monthly fee comes in. So, I'm all about lowering it, but we would never, to me, want it to go down to zero, because they are costing us money. So, um, and yeah, I just was gonna say one other thing, and, and, um, the, as you were talking, Cheryl, the one thing that just kind of kept going through my mind is, why would this conversation be so much different than extended day? 'Cause as we're having the extended day conversation, it's all about zero, right? Like, we wanna charge enough, but then we wanna think about our families and their budget, but we also need to protect our schools. So, what I don't understand is, and I, and this is not rhetorical, I really wanna know where you're coming from. Why would we treat Belters Swim Racket Club so differently than extended day?
I, I don't think we need to, that was the, the deal. I think that the biggest part of the fact that we were treating them differently with such high fees, that, that is a problem. And that's what I said at the last school board meeting, that we don't wanna raise, we, we'd like to even out. We don't have to make money on the pool, but with the deal with extended day is the fact is, they're gonna have more charges, probably greater the following year, 'cause we're trying to bring in as many kids as we possibly can. This isn't limited group of people. You know, I wish we would have half the amount of people they have.
But it's a program we don't have to do.
That's right. Well, we don't have to do that, we, and we don't have to do that either, we don't have to do extended day either.
We don't have to, but it's, it's, it's still, it's tied to our school.
Well, it's tied to schools, but we don't have to do it.
It supports the school.
It's not saying every school has to do extended day. Um, we do it because we're trying to offer this bonus to our families, to make it easier on them.
Totally. I just, from, I guess as we continue to talk about this, more for the greater public as they're listening. To me, again, we're doing nothing other than to, we're in li- in alignment with what we're doing with extended day. We're saying, we only have so much in our general budget, right, and it's shrinking. We are trying to get to a point where this financially makes sense. And so, it's my understanding that this fee schedule, after lots of hard work, is kind of where we landed on, this is the amount of money that, where we could...
So, in general, and I've, I made this point previously, this fee schedule by no means will all of a sudden make us break even or, or turn a profit. We're facing rising costs in operating a pool and a wellness center. We're trying to play catch-up. You know, our minimum wage went up from, if you go back five years, eight, nine dollars now to fifteen. We're, we're trying to play catch-up, and with how the market is as well, we cannot charge what it would cost to exactly recoup immediately, based on the current number of people we have.
Right.
It, it would be, it's completely cost prohibitive if we looked at it.
This isn't a huge moneymaker for us.
No, no, you're right.
I mean, this is like, we're just trying to pay some bills. You know, what, and I'm not trying to be disrespectful, but we had people come before us and say, I am gonna die if you don't give us access to this pool. So, if it is not worth twenty-five dollars a month for your, you know what I'm saying?
And some did say they would pay more. And some people did say they would pay more.
Well, they all said they would pay more, and they're willing, I said, they're willing to, they already paid more with the three-hundred. Okay, that was fifty dollars more. They said they paid fifty dollars more, that's three-fifty. So, they're, that would be paying more. I just don't think they're looking at hundreds more, you know, a hundred-and-seventy dollars more. That's the key. That's what they're, that's their, that's the beef that I hear.
Is this on consent tonight?
Yeah, we're, we're voting this in tonight. That's why we need, we need to hash this out.
Can we pull it out of, I would hate for this to be something that we just do a quick yea or nay. Can we pull it out of consent?
We have time.
You, you have the ability when it's whether or not you're approving the agenda. When that's requested at the beginning of the meeting, if you do not want it to be under consent, you would say, I would like to move item, whatever the item number is for tonight's meeting.
I would do that beginning of the meeting action. Okay. I'm just letting my fellow board members know, I believe that group, 'cause I saw the email. They said, don't come to this meeting, 'cause they're not talking about it this meeting. They're coming tonight. So, out of respect for everybody, I think this has been really great conversation, but I feel like to put it under consent tonight would just, is not really what we need.
Well, I just wanted to ask one question before we decide to do that or not. Um, when, when are, do you, do you need to, 'cause otherwise, this is gonna come back late, in, in late August.
We, we are coming back on the fifteenth of August to do a recap of, here's what we spent last year, here's what our projected budget is for this next year.
Right.
And our overall timeline is, we would like for our vote to, you know, to take place and be able to implement it as far as the impact of paid memberships go. September one, impact to insurance members, November first. Anything past this point, and we're looking at farther in the...
Okay, so it doesn't, by, by putting this on to next month's business meeting for a vote, it's not setting us back as far as, uh, charging the new membership prices, 'cause they, this is gonna start in September?
I don't think that was the ask. The ask was to move it from consent into action, so that you could have a conversation about it.
Oh, to discuss it more tonight? Oh.
Just for, just for, just, 'cause otherwise, it's gonna be, okay, just consent, and we go yea or nay.
Just moving the place that it is on the...
I see, okay. So, we will still vote it tonight, but we'll continue this discussion at that me- okay, I'm, I'm with you now. I thought we were moving it off, so, okay.
And again, also, I really believe that we need to look at the, the administration for the pool. It does not belong in operations. It needs to go back under Flagler Technical College. Yous are probably not excited about it, but they've run it before, that's where it always was. I don't think they has a real interest, although he's doing the best that he can, to have that ease facilities. Ease facilities, ease busing, ease food services. Are there any other programs under operations that deal with adult memberships and people, and, no, no. It doesn't belong there. It belongs under adult community ed, 'cause that's what it is. It's adult community ed.
Can I ask a bucket question?
Yes.
'Cause I had someone text me, Patty, about that if we moved it to FTC, then we don't get certain funds. Are there any bucket implications if we move Beltar under FTC? Like, does extended day get hurt? Does, is there anything that doing that change with finances?
No, because all of those, all of those funds are all part of the general fund. So, this swim and racket, community ed, extended day, they all fall under the general fund, they're just accounted for separately. So, nothing would change if it went back to, um, FTC under the umbrella, just like nothing changed when it was pulled out from, from them.
But it would be in its own column. It was through separate funds.
It would be in its own fund, and then it would revert back to how it was before. It would be swim and racket club and community education. Within that fund, for those two, there's two separate projects. So, you could still pull out and see how much is community education classes and how much is the swim and racket club.
I just, come next year, I don't want somebody to be arguing, saying, oh, you guys have the money, when it came from extended day, or whatever. It needs to be in its own.
Well, I'm confused. I'm confused about this whole thing. It just seems like this pool loss is a shell game here. 'Cause, you know, when I first came on, I, I'm told by former superintendent said, okay, we're paying for this out of aftercare dollars, right? Then, um, it turns out then that was happening, but then this year, then it moved out of there, at, at least the allocation of sorts, uh, into just the general fund. And now, we're trying to move back into FTC. It just, for some reason, this is, this loss just keeps moving around the district. And I, and I don't understand why, if this is...
For as long as I can remember, as long as I can remember, until two years ago, it was always under Flagler Technical College.
But why did they move it out then, if it was such a great place to be?
It was, because they managed the entire facility.
But why did they get it moved?
Then we had one administrator decide they were changing things, and pulled it out, and then put it with the youth center and the Carver Center. Youth center and the Carver Center, that's not where it belonged, okay? And that had always been managed differently, not under FTC.
It was done by the former chief of operations with a different board.
Yes, but before you got here, just, it's only been two years.
And this was the first, really the first true year that we have had a separate budget. Joshua and Patty have done a great job on making sure that everything in our budget that we spend is Beltar Swim and Racket. It's not convoluted with anything else, so...
And the, and to that, speaking to that, that's why my position is, the most transparent place for this is where it sits right now. Because the, the whole move forward, right, um, the argument was, should we keep this club? And the argument was, it doesn't, it's gonna, it's not sustainable, right? So, we're trying, the, 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 the direction now was to keep the club open. And now, it's, the, and now, we're trying to prove whether or not, in this year, it can stand on its own. And the best place for it is on its own, so there is no, um, uh, confusion when it comes to the numbers. 'Cause ultimately, next, and this is gonna come to a vote next year, to whether to continue it or to, to likely, uh, alternative option, based on what we had there, would be to just make it a student-focused facility. Um, we don't know what the condition of the building and stuff will be a year from now, we assume it's gonna be fine. But, uh, we're gonna have to, to come back around. And I think to, to make a clear and concise decision once and for all, where we're going with this pool, is to let it stand on its own, and there's no question, right?
I don't, I don't disagree with you having it stand its own, but it needs to be under adult education, still standing on its own. To have our facilities operation, chief of facilities and operations overseeing all of that is ludicrous. It's ridiculous. His job is facilities. Yes, he's responsible for the pool filter and the operations and the building, that's what his team does. He's also responsible for every other building we have in this district, okay? That's his job. His job is not to deal with membership, those kind of isolated things, staffing, personal leave. You need somebody that's supposed to be handling, you know, I'm not gonna be in work today. He's gonna have to do that, alright? And he has been doing that, actually, he's been doing that, okay? Uh, if, if there's leave to be taken, or vacation time, or whatever, and, and submit time sheets and things like that. That is not what this person does. It does not belong there. It belongs back there, because that's what they do annually, all year long. That's why I'm saying it needs to go back. It had been there for years. And yes, it was not separated financially. We have done that, that is correct. It should stay that way. I like that, because then we can do the things we need to do down the road, which we're going to have to make those calls. But we'll see exactly where it is. I just believe those, the management of that facility needs to go back to the person, to the group that had overseen it for as long as I can remember.
But ultimately, all the loss then falls under that, whether, even though it's categorized separately, um, it all falls under that budget, right?
But we'll see, we'll see their loss.
Because we're, they're already at a deficit of around thirty-seven thousand a year. So, we're, so now, the FTC budget is, is gonna show over two, over two-hundred thousand dollar, assuming, assuming our losses don't get squashed with what we're doing here.
We'll see that. We'll see that. You know, it's, it's not potentially...
Well, I, I don't think I'd want that in, in, in my budget.
But, ma'am chair, with all due respect, um, I mean, that is so far into operations. Like, that i- is my responsibility to ensure that Beltar Swim and Racket Club, as well as every other program within this organization, has, has proper oversight as to who approves their time and their leave and all of those things. Tonight before you will be the fee schedule. That is what will be brought before you in consent. If it is desire of the board to bring it out of, uh, bring it out of consent and into action, then we would just get a motion for that.
So, if I can just follow up on that, um, because what is the board, is deciding whether Beltar Swim and Racket Club continues to be membership-based. So, what I'm hearing is, well, let me take a step back. Whether this falls under FTC or where it currently sits, is that your call? Is that our call?
No, that is my call as to where it sits, what, what, if I'm gonna make a change that goes against what the job descriptions are, or who the person, whomever is in the position reports to, I bring the job description before you to change anything structural or reporting.
Superintendent Moore, not this body, has the authority to change this under FTC? And we don't have to, we wouldn't have to vote on it?
We would have to say on that too.
You would have to say, if I change who the person reports to, yes.
But, well, we're not talking about who the person reports to, we're talking about the categoricals, right? Like, who, where this Beltar Swim and Racket Club falls under? Does it fall under, whether it falls under FTC or?
Operations.
Operations.
So, that would change who they report to, which is like Superintendent Moore said.
Well, there's some things that we vote on that have implications, of course, for operations. I'm just trying to figure out who, at the end of the day, gets to ultimately make this call.
All facilities, anything referring to the pool, anything fencing, it would go to facilities, operations.
But I just, I'm wondering, are we having this conversation, and we don't even have a, we don't even have a second?
So, I think, Ms. Hunt, what your question is, is so, um, when, and I'm gonna use Superintendent Middlestat as the best example. Before Ms. Middlestat became the superintendent, the, our organizational chart and the way we flowed, we previously had, um, executive director of leadership and development, right? Ms. Middlestat deemed that her organizational structure was going to be different. Instead of having executive directors, she wanted chiefs. When she made that choice to switch from executive director to chiefs, she brought that to the board with saying, board, I'm going to change the way that I'm doing business. And she did share that with you, and you all said, yep.
No, not that.
But the prior board said, yep, we're in agreement, chiefs instead of executive directors, got it. That's how we're going to have our organizational structure. But it was at her purview and recommendation of how it would be handled and managed. So, it is more now, um, decides that the oversight needs to be shifted from operations to a, a different placement. She would make that recommendation to this board. At this juncture, that's not the recommendation being made.
Will we look forward to hearing from you on any changes?
So, does that, does that, does that?
No, it's, yes, it totally does. It starts with her.
Yes, ma'am. It does. Yes, ma'am.
Love it. So, my only ask would be, should that be a change you would like to make? I think, given prior conversations, we would want to, under that new structure, make sure that we have those metrics that this board will be looking at in deciding whether we are going to continue. 'Cause that was the agreement, your standing, is that we would give it about another year, have very defined metrics on what we are measuring success with. So, that would be my only ask, is if you decide to go the FTC route, we then make adjustments to what do those metrics look like.
There's only one thing I'll throw into that, that thought. And that's because he's not gonna be in his position much longer, okay? He's done an excellent job, and I appreciate all the work, and he supported, he supported our director, chief, very well. They've been a good team. So, he's not gonna be there. So, do we proceed and replace that position with someone else or not? That's all operational.
That's all operational.
And we look forward to seeing what you decide.
But that's why we're having the conversation.
Love it. Okay. So, we, but so, I will be bringing up to move the Beltar Swim and Racket Club out of consent, so that we can, at the time, ask any additional...
Yeah, that's good. That's good. Okay. Anything else on old business? Thank you, Bill. All for you. That's my question. Any other old business? Anybody?
No.
How about new business? New business? Don't see any? No new business? We have public comment.
We do, uh, we have one public comment.
Uh, our one public.
Danny, and she is speaking regarding, uh, the, uh...
Who knows? I didn't have my glasses on. I don't know what I typed in there.
You typed "Flagler Youth Orchestra."
Oh, okay. I might wanna mention something else as well. I wanna thank you for your time. I was listening to, on the workshop, on my phone in my office. I intended to come earlier, but I was like, huh, y'all don't need me over there, and then my phone started blowing up. So, there were some other people that had some concerns, and I wanna thank all of you for how you're handling this. And I specifically would like to thank Ms. Wallack, who has been absolutely dealing with the blunt of all of it. And she's done a fantastic job, I must say. So, I'm gonna say that. 'Cause a lot of times, people come up here to complain, but she has done a great job. With that being said, I do have a concern. Not much of a pause for that. Um, how we're communicating with the public, or lack thereof, with response to what's going on with the program? Because I know you don't have control of the website, she's done a great job. But who thought about, hey, other than me and a few other people, we need to be able to communicate with the parents and the students of the program? We don't have, you know, I know it was brought up earlier today, but we're still not communicating. Parents are still purchasing money, they're on Facebook pages. Um, someone said, hey, I submitted a question, there's no response. I mean, it's just sloppy. I mean, it's just sloppy, and it's making Flagler County Schools look bad. And I know we're remapping, but we need to try to consider and come up with, what are we gonna say in the interim? Because school starts in less than a month, right? And my daughter participate in this program, and I think it's great. The other, um, concern or idea, cause I don't want us to get too far down the road, because when Ms. Womack was doing a wonderful job, somebody should've said, we need to do these other things, and that didn't happen. That didn't happen. No one said, hey, we need control of the domain name, we need the website, we need mail check, while Ms. Tristan was communicating with us. And for those of you who have personal relationships with her, I would ask that you would leverage that to try to get these things, cause they're not her property. They do not belong to her. We don't know what she's doing with this. She could be sending out emails, or planning to send out emails, or use it for her own personal interests with her new venture. Whether it was intentional, unintentional, she is hurting the program. And I would like this board and those that know her, and those that work for Flagler Schools to help ensure that. And lastly, what's gonna be our legal recourse? What are we gonna do? We gonna just wait it out, sit it out? Who gonna sue? When we gonna sue? And let's get it done, because you know what? We're Flagler Schools, and we're Flagler Schools strong, and I believe in that. The other thing is, I remember there used to be a community division. The little circles on the wall and all that, I've been around that long. We need to bring that back, please, and thank you, because I shouldn't have to come here. And I never used to have to come here. I would just walk in and talk to Lynette, or talk to somebody, and have my concerns, and it was just important to have that. So, I just wanted to mention that to you. Thank you for your time. Thank you for all that you do.
Thank you. Anybody else? That's it? Okay, we're up to our closing comments. Will?
Uh, just again, thanks to everybody, and, um, we'll see you tonight.
Nothing, Rachel. See y'all tonight.
Diddo.
Diddo. Okay, um, let me just speak briefly, I'm gonna speak briefly and kinda answer questions out of my closing comment. Is the situation with FYO in some progress? Unfortunately, there were no, or not a job description, so that's being developed by our curriculum team. And they'll get that done. Once the job description's done, it'll come to us for approval. And then, they'll be able to post the positions. As far as communicating with group, we do need to make it better, that's for sure. I'm sure Ms. Moore will be on top of that, because we've gotta find out, as Mr. Ferry brought up earlier today, how can we communicate to that group, we need that information, so they know what's going on, other than watching this to the very end. So, that's where it's at. Hopefully, we'll be able to make moves. We have interested applicants, people are contacting many of us, saying they want a job, they wanna do it. We just have to get through the hoops that weren't there before, and unfortunately, that's a process that takes time. So, that's where we are with FYO.
May I add to your comment? Uh, just as a suggestion, um, you know, we have our hot topics on the, on there, just as an indication that, to the community, that is it something that we're working on, maybe to throw that there. And if there is some, um, area of our website that where somebody most likely would go to, um, look for information for the strings program, then we just put some reference there that we, you know, that they know that something's happening. I think that's what just people wanna know, is that something's moved forward, so.
That reminded me, we did talk about before this board was seated, about a, like graphs of where things are on various topics. And you remember that conversation? We never got there.
No, we did.
It's there now.
Yeah, it's there.
So, that could be something.
We do have a scheduled communication going out to the general public, as well as our parents, allow FYI, FYO this week. So, absolutely, we definitely do need to.
Do you have any closing comments?
I do not. See you tonight.
All right, without any more closing comments, then I'm gonna adjourn this meeting, and we'll see everybody at six o'clock tonight.